the Methacton Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of executive sessions, there was an executive session of the board held on June 12, 2023, at the Arrowhead Elementary School for the purposes of conducting the annual evaluation of the superintendent. By way of attendance, all board members are in attendance except for Ms. Cancro, who is excused. And now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we start, I just want to make two announcements. The first, we had some technical difficulty at the beginning of the meeting. That's why we didn't start right on seven o'clock. And the second announcement is that this evening, there are actually two meetings. The first one is a special meeting for the adoption of the 2023-24 fiscal year budget. And the second meeting is our regular work session meeting. So with that said, this evening, we'll begin with the 2023-24 final budget presentation. So this evening, the 2023-24 fiscal year budget is up for your consideration. Again, that vote is here this evening. A process that began in October of 2022, followed by the sharing of the proposed preliminary budget in January of 23, with a then budget of 4.1% Act I index limit, along with a number of important items removed from the budget, was provided to the board back in January as a balanced proposed preliminary budget. Over the next several months, the Finance Committee of the Board and my administration and I have worked to best predict the revenue and expenditures needed to provide a high-quality public school education. That effort resulted in this final budget that includes a 3.15% tax increase while being responsive to the educational operational needs of our school community. To highlight the matters, this budget addresses class size at the elementary schools by adding two additional teachers. It also addresses the science and STEM at the high school by adding one additional science teacher. It adjusts operational challenges in the evening supervision and ongoing maintenance of buildings by adding a supervisory and maintenance mechanic. It includes a more realistic approach to estimating the interest income given the market trends. It includes a slight increase in transportation costs as a result of the new contract with first student. It includes increases in salaries for teachers and some support staff as part of the multi-year collective bargaining agreement that makes Methacton competitive and allows us to attract high-quality talent. It includes a transfer of funds to the capital projects and addresses smaller issues, smaller capital issues without having us to borrow for every project and incur interest and fees associated with the borrowing. It includes textbook purchases for the implementation of the iReady Math Series K through eight for next school year, among many other important educational and operational matters. In all, the 2023-24 fiscal year budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee of the Board and is to move forward for your adoption this evening. This budget provides for a high-quality public school education while keeping Methacton in the lower third of the millage rate changes in the last five years. With this, I ask Mr. Bricker to present more details and for the board's consideration this evening. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So tonight, we're going to go over the final budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year. This includes all the changes that were able to get done through the month of June. First one you'll see in June, our assessments went up about $4.2 million. This allowed us to decrease the millage rate to 3.15. The local real estate taxes by $33.1,000. Interest income was adjusted based on our balances and the interest rates that are out there. Staffing was updated based on the changes in our staff. This affects the Social Security and Retirement refunds that we get from the state or subsidies that we get from the state. And it also has some adjustments with regards to Title I, II, III, and IV, as we adjusted how the money would be spent based on the grant that's going to be submitted. As our staffing area, I won't spend too much time on this. As Dr. Zerby noted, there's two teachers for the elementary level and one for the high school. We also have the supervisor of facilities and the maintenance mechanic. There were no changes from the last update, which is in April. The expenditures, obviously, we changed staff based on retirements, new hires, and everything. So that resulted in a $17,000 reduction. And we include the benefits of the 2023-24 fiscal year. This is a new task that we've been able to accomplish. Typically, we've taken what people have today and you rolled that forward. This year, we were able to incorporate the selections they made in open enrollment and incorporate those into the budget to get a better and more realistic opportunity on where we stand. We also had some changes with regards to the retirement, Social Security, medical benefits associated with that as the new people come in and the retirees go off and the changes that they make and the adjustments that they have to those areas. And then we also have a change in athletics. We talked about the fact that last month, when we presented the proposed final budget, that I had not had a chance to meet with the athletic director on the football helmets. We did remove all the helmets and get them out as they were already picked up in a uniform area and a rotation setup associated with that. There was a $6,000 adjustment for the charter schools. There were some transportation changes with regards to half-days that were made. And then, as I noted before, we had some Title I adjustments that needed to be done to fit the grant. This slide contains the summary of the changes. I won't go through all of them. Just walk through the real estate taxes from the preliminary budget through the month of February, March, April, May, and June. You can see that the overall real estate taxes from preliminary budget reduced by $377.8,000. And this line goes through each of the different changes in the areas that were done throughout the year so that we can show everyone the changes month by month that were made by each area. We do a similar thing with regards to salary and benefits. Again, you can show how the salaries changed at the end with the increase of the staff. There's a $396.3,000 increase and the associated changes along with the retirement, Social Security, medical, and other benefits, and how they changed as we went through the process of grading the budget. We do the same for the operating. You can see how the transportation at the top goes through February, $11,000, then in March, $115,000 increase. That's when the new agreement and some additional half-days were done. In May, we had a reduction of $83,000. I was able to lock in our fuel prices for next year at a very favorable rate. The total change for transportation from the preliminary budget was $44.1,000. Again, we break down every other area that was changed so everyone can see how they matriculated through the process. Debt and service changes, as you can see, the big thing was title. And I don't know why titles in that classification, however, the fees that we pay is an 800 series, and that's why that falls in the debt and service transfers. We also have the capital spending that Dr. Zerby noted and the food service startup cost that we put in for $110,000 and the final technology leases. So where has this put us? This put us at a budget of $126,625,118. Sorry, $126,625,118. From the May update, we reduced that by $40,320, giving us our final June update of $126,585,115.43. This is a balanced budget, so the expenditures also match. So what happened? The preliminary budget was $126.8 million. As we went through those changes, as I noted above, the total changes combined to $237,177.95 worth of changes from the preliminary through February, March, April, May, and into the final one in June. And then the same changes occurred down in the expenditures. Obviously, the benefits being the biggest change, down $2.8 million. So I kind of want to walk you through what happened through the process. Revenue this year increased by $6.3 million from the prior year. We did not qualify for a Peers exception. However, we did qualify for the special ed exception, which wouldn't have been an additional $1.5 million of real estate taxes. We could have taken, the impact would have been to max the tax rate out to 5.79% based on this number. Again, we did not take this exception. The assessments increased by $39.3 million. This accounts for 32% of the increase in local taxes. Millage increase finalized at 3.15% versus an Act I of 4.1%. The EIT income increased by $900,000. It's 11.3% increase. And we added $1.1 million of interest income based on today's rates and our current balances sitting in our accounts. Subsidies increased by $1.2 million. So where do the expenses come from? The staffing increased by $4.4 million with regards to salary. This included all contractual increases, includes all staffing changes, includes all retirements and replacements, removed seven PCAs. The savings was offset by contract staff that required certs. These positions were unfilled, so no individuals were impacted by the reduction. We added the three teachers, as mentioned previously, the facility supervisor and the preventative maintenance specialist. With regards to benefits, our healthcare costs were increasing. Medical went up 8.8%. RX-based plan went down 3%. The buy-up was flat. We removed $1.1 million payment required to fund the balance to the Buxmont Healthcare Consortium last year. Dental and Vision were flat with regards to interest percentage increases and included the 2023-24 staffing. Now, when I say the increase is percentage-wise, those are the percents, not the dollars associated with them. So I want to be clear on that. Peers also decreased when it comes to our subs, comes to the retirement area, from 35.26% to 34% flat. Social Security was also flat, and those changes were applied to the staffing changes and the increased salaries. This cost a total of $1.3 million from last year. Our operating expenses went up $1.6 million, keeping it with the same series you're used to seeing, the professional series, the professional services, the 300 series. The business office went down by about $300,000 due to legal cost reduction. Communications up about .2, $200,000 for consultants, actually $150,000 for the consultant. Personnel went up about a half a million. People Services by about $700,000. Again, I'll remind you, we qualified for $1.5 million increase with regards to special education that we did not take. And transportation went down by about $200,000 to a lower IU subsidy cost, as we now run the routes that the IU used to run and we used to get a deduction for that. Property Services, Technology, we reduced by about $900,000, which is more of a fake reduction because that actually just moved to debt and transfers based on our new auditors accounting for this. So now we break out our technology leases from the 400 series into the 800 and 900 series, 800 being interest and 900 being principal. The other purchased services, the 500 series increased by $1.1 million. People Services went up a half a million due to charter schools. Our Act 55 students account for a $200,000 increase. And transportation overall had a $200,000 increase due to the new contract. And our supplies area went up about $400,000. I mentioned the athletics going up by $100,000. This is to update the uniform rotation as well as other costs associated with referees, and there are increases as well as other expenditures that were necessary for the programs. Curriculum, as Dr. Zerby mentioned, went up about $300,000 for the new curriculum material. And technology went up by about $100,000 for software costs. Again, this is not the leases, this is the actual software we're purchasing. The 700 series was less than $1,000 and did not really impact anything that we're doing because that's the capitalization of cost. Debt service increased by $1.6 million this year from the prior year. Technology lease was added $800,000. So that was previously in the 400 series, which I mentioned previously. And we increased our capital transfer by $800,000. This increase enables the district to fund small to medium-sized capital needs without incurring expenses. As an example, if we borrow $1 million and repay it over 10 years at a 33.39% whack, that would cost us about $230,000 of interest. If we did that in five years in a row, we would have actually be paying six years worth of money that we're transferring into the capital. Debt service on the bonds reduced by $100,000. Total bond debt service is $10,266,011. So where does this put the taxpayers and how does this impact them? This chart here is to give everyone an example on how their homes are impacted. On the left side of the bottom part, you have the value of your home, the assessments that's associated with it based on the common level ratio of 2.53, which was adopted July 1, 2022. So the average home value in Methacton currently is $444,824. That gives us an assessed value of $175,820. The impact to that individual's taxes this year is an increase of $175.29 for an average tax rate of $5,740.18. The five-year trend on millage, and I'll apologize for the size of this, but looks a lot better on the computer screen. As you'll see, Pottstown, Pottsgrove, Norristown, and then Methacton, we are the fourth lowest increase over the last five years. Our increase over this time period is 8.7%. I will point out that Pottstown and Norristown are pretty much at 0% the last couple of years. So they are very hard to compete with, as Pottsgrove did keep their rate down very much over the same time period. So what have we done? Our key timelines, we've met everyone as we've matriculated through the system here this year. We've brought everything forward that we had known, and we've disclosed them as we went through them. Some of them moved from their original position based on the timing and actually getting the information, but we did find everything, get everything, and did factor everything into our budget. Our next steps is to approve the budget, approve the taxes associated with the budget, approve the Homestead-Farmstead Act for 2023-24, and then finally, I'll be working on with my group to create a 2023-24 budget detail report. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Questions or comments from members of the board, folks to my right? Ms. Clary?
Thank you, Ken. Good evening. Mr. Bricker, I just wanted to make a few comments. I support the budget. As a member of the Finance Committee, I think it represents an investment in our children, in our staff, and thus, an investment in the community. So I fully support it. We have continuing investment needs to address in terms of inflationary costs across the board, as you've shown, things including transportation. We have contractual salary increases for our teachers to meet, which I wasn't here when that happened, but as a new school board member, I fully support. In terms of giving our teachers a livable, good wage, being able to attract new talent in a shrinking, you know, pool in the future as our needs require. But for me, I think the elephant in the room is our aging infrastructure, and that is, to me, pretty important. I would love for the state to buck up and pay for, you know, the needs of our facilities, but that's just not our reality. I have heard somebody say from the community that we are trying to create a slush fund. I have heard someone in the community say we should be issuing tax rebates to folks because of the $800 proposed move to capital reserves, because we have a surplus, and because we have the 13-plus million sitting in the Capital Reserve account. To that, I would say I disagree. That $13 million, at least in part, had been earmarked, from my understanding, for the high school HVAC project, which was put on hold due to the increased costs, and those needs haven't gone away. What you talked about in terms of saving money for the, to not borrow in the future, makes sound fiscal sense to me. To ask the taxpayers to foot the bill on more interest, on borrowing money when we could be setting it aside to pay for the issues that we have, at least the small or medium-sized projects, makes sound fiscal sense to me. So, thank you, and I support the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Any other comments from members of the board to my right? Mr. Winters?
Well said, Ms. Clary. A couple of things I want to thank Tim and your staff for making the adjustments, and I think we're making improvements on how we communicate the budget. I do think we have more room to improve. So the person that just turns in, calls in, or signs in today is going to maybe struggle with a quick presentation like that. So I look forward to the presentation that you create over the next month or two that goes out to the community as a communication that really summarizes well to the community, you know, what we're spending on, why we're spending it, et cetera. I think there's a couple positives that Dr. Zerby pointed out, a lot of them. One is that we adhering to our elementary class size for K through second grade and anticipation of that, I think is a strong investment not to have second-grade classes of 27, 28 students. Our policy says to keep it at 22, and we do our best to try to do that. The adding of the two teachers at elementary is around that aspect. Some of the improvements you made on the interest income, the benefit selections, to be more exact, certainly the charter school expense has had an impact on this year's budget. At the same time, we've had positives related to interest that we've tried to correct as well. Another positive is that our assessments went up $39 million in the two townships, which is certainly helping to the district. We have a fairly healthy economy, so the EIT, we were able to take again from the taxpayer, but it is $900,000, but it's not affecting their property tax rates. And of course, the state has kicked in last year, and we anticipate hopefully not in this budget, but hopefully that the additional state money is coming in. So there's a lot of positive here. I believe that, most importantly, the things that we have done contractually to keep our staff and to be able to operate a district, this is probably the best year, Andrew could probably correctly, our best year of turnover on that, and we'll see savings on that moving forward compared to other districts. So a lot of positives, and I appreciate your effort. to other districts. So a lot of positives, and I appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any other comments from members tonight? Seeing none to my left, Ms. Reese?
Two quick things. Can we go back to slide 19 if possible? I just wanted to see that again. And, you know, Ms. Clary and Ms. Winters said a lot. I don't usually talk too much about finance, but I did want to note that I was, you know, I'm more, you know, I was a little worried with the infrastructure, with the new contract. I was very worried, and I did want to thank Mr. Bricker because, sitting here for several years now, I was impressed this year with what you were able to do and what you've been able to do for the last few years. And when we talk about the staff, because that's where a big chunk of money goes, as it should, we couldn't do our, we couldn't do this without the staff. You know, we have a teacher returning to us on the agenda for this evening, a phenomenal science teacher. So the fact that we can come into budget and do this and have our elementary class size remain the way it is, there's a district tonight struggling with their budget, and one of the suggestions was to increase elementary class size. So I just think it's great. So thank you, and I wanted, I wanted to bring that up. I mean, it is very nerve-wracking, what Ms. Clary says. It's very nervous for us to know that we have staff to pay, rightfully so, and infrastructure to fix, so, and to keep our education strong. So thank you. My one question I did have, and I'm not sure, you don't have to move slides, but I wasn't able to make it to finance this month, but at property, Mr. Brannick brought up some of our technology needs, and I was not sure, I know that's all included, but was that under the techna leases, or is it kind of combined in a different, a couple different places?
Yeah, Ms. Reese, what you're referring to are the purchases that are earmarked for this summer.
Okay.
They're actually not in this budget, but they are part of utilization of our capital projects fund, or they may be, as we discussed in finance, used under the ESRS grant, depending on their acceptance by the grant rules.
Thank you. I couldn't remember exactly how that was going to be paid for. Thank you.
But what you saw at property is what we're moving forward with. It's just, we may be taking it out of the project fund or out of the grant funds. Thank you, Ms. Reese. Ms. Perdue?
Mr. Bricker, I do want to say thank you, just because sitting on the Finance Committee this year, I think we gave you a lot of feedback. You took a lot of that back even last week and made adjustments to the presentation, just to make it clear and more helpful to anyone watching or anyone that will be provided this. So thank you. I did have a question on, I think it was 17, in reference to the capital transfer. Can you maybe a few items that will fall under that when we consider medium to, or small to medium-sized capital needs?
Sure. So some of the borrowings that we have done in the past have been for roofs. That's something we can do. Boilers, chillers, anything that we, that would fall into a relatively something we could afford and not borrow. It's not going to cover a building. It's not going to cover the canopy and pads project. But it, there's different areas that it can handle with paving and other areas that the district needs to address. I think once we finish the facilities condition assessment reports, break that up between master plan and what we can do with capital, that will have a better and clearer picture on how to address these needs and in what sequence.
If I could just add to that, Ms. Perdue, this evening, Mr. Kenwood, our Facilities Director, and I will be presenting some recommendations to more, to provide greater clarity around what those smaller to medium projects are. But in the end of that presentation, what you'll, what you'll realize is, we want to be able to quantify what small and medium are versus projects that are, have to borrow for. We estimate right now that we're probably going to be in the neighborhood of one to $2 million projects that are small and medium, that we should be able to use our capital projects fund to pay for rather than going out and borrowing on that. As Mr. Bricker mentioned in the presentation, if you borrow a million dollars and you borrow that over 10 years with the current interest rate, we would, we would end up spending about $230,000 extra to borrow for those projects. Good fiscal sense, in my opinion, makes, is making sure that we have the ability and our planning is what's ideal, to have this master plan ready for taking on those particular projects. So the, in all fairness, the clarity will be developed once the master plan is in place, and we'll be able to say, here are the projects over the next five to 10 years that can be done through the capital projects, and here are the, here are the projects that are going to need, probably require a borrowing scenario. And we'll probably have better clarity on that in September when, and you'll see tonight that that's our target date for completing the facilities master plan.
And thank you. I do, I do support placing this money aside for that. I just wanted to clarify the things that fall under, and thank you also for including some of the things that it will not cover. I was just trying to get a little bit more understanding of, we have a list of small to medium size, and then if there's any items that possibly fall under with that we shouldn't even consider in the future if it comes to finance to say this. And then I'm also thinking, with this amount set to the side, is that going to come to finance when there's a need to, if there's a project that is found to be small or medium-sized need, is that going to come to finance to review?
It'd actually go through property first, because it'll be a project that we need to discuss in property. And once it's moved from property, then it would come to finance, and then to the full board.
Thank you. That was my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the, Ms. Graff?
I just, honestly, I just wanted to say, Mr. Bricker, this slide deck to me was super clear and easy to understand. I will say, we've seen it a couple of times, so maybe it's because I'm becoming more familiar, but I do think that it was really great to be able to see the high points and the differential sort of laid out in the way that you did, because for someone like me, it's important to understand what is causing the budget to shift and where is it shifting. And when, when we hear people comment about us moving money from one place to another, or the technology coming out of this group of costs and moving over to a different group of costs, it's really just moving money on the balance sheet, but it's not actually changing the cost to the district. And so I think it's really important for us to be able to see that. And the slides, I think, were really, really clear about where the money is going and what the increases are and why we're doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graff. Are there any other comments from members of the board? Seeing that, Madam President?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Now, it is time for a public comment on these board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on these board action items?
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. One thing I wanted to bring to your attention was that a year ago, Mr. Bricker presented a slide like he did this evening relative to the five-year increase in millage. And I found flaws in that in that it ignores changes in enrollment. One district, for instance, of Wissahicken, had almost a 9% increase in enrollment. Methacton was one with a decrease around 3% over 10, over five years. So when you, and we always hear that salaries and benefits associated with staff are roughly 70% of the total budget. So I adjusted the millage increase by 70% of the enrollment changes, and that changed the rankings. For instance, Upper Marion, again, a year ago, was ranked to number nine, but when adjusted for that enrollment change, they became ranked number one. Methacton changed from rank of five last year to a rank of eight. I think that, that that's a better way of looking at what different Montgomery County school districts had to, had, had it on their plate relative to millage increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment on board action items?
Jim Oliver, Worcester. You guys have a very short memory. I remember getting mailers from the care team, trashing the prior board for raising taxes every year. Huh, you guys are doing the same thing. 3.15% this time. Why aren't you criticizing yourselves? You guys blasted the prior board. You know, and 3.15% of what? Of $126 million. That's $3.6 million. It's not like it's 3% of 50 million. That's what we're talking about. 3.6 million. You guys got $6 million more new revenue, and you still don't have enough money? Going to raise it 3 million more on top of that? You guys are irresponsible. I totally disagree with your support of the budget. One of the reasons, I hear Dr. Zerbi talking about a high-quality public school education, you forgot to mention at a private school price. Cost per pupil, didn't even mention it, per year. $24,000, 24, 700,000, 700, $24,000 a year. That's Germantown Academy, right? And who's paying for that? Us. Does anybody up front pay $24,000 in property tax or school tax? No. And some of the folks have kids. We, the taxpayers, are subsidizing this board. Anybody up front who has kids, who's not paying 24/7, we, the taxpayers, are subsidizing. I already did the figures with the prior board. I think it's 350 grand. But you guys are sitting up front going, oh, yeah, sure. 3.15%, no problem, right? Not, not good. One of the things I had a problem with was the raise, raising the contribution to the capital fund. Yes, that's a problem. That's not responsible. You don't pay your mortgage off when you have extra money coming into your house. This doesn't make any sense. The, the problem with the decision is you took $800,000 that you didn't have to, to make it 1.5 million. If you had not taken the $800,000 and put it back into the budget, our tax right now would be about 2, 2.2%, 2.3%. But for whatever reason, you're going to play the shell game, and it's a shell game, with the capital reserve fund. So you may be happy with the budget, but that's money we pay, not just this year extra, every year from here forward. You guys really should
Anyone else for public comment on board action items this evening? Seeing none. We have three, three motions, three motions to approve. I'm going to take them separately. The first one is, may I have a motion to approve the general fund budget of the Methacton School District for the 2023-2024 fiscal year in the amount of $126,585,115.43, requiring a millage of 32.6492 and an increase in property tax of 3.15%. May I have a motion? Mr. McGinnis? May I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any comments from the board? Right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries eight to zero. Thank you. Next motion. May I have a motion to approve the local services tax of $5 for the Lower Providence Township and $10 for Worcester Township under the provision of Act 511, which includes the following: Approve the real estate transfer tax of 1.5% for Lower Providence and Worcester Townships under the provision of Act 511; Approve the earned income tax of 1.5% for Lower Providence and Worcester Townships under the provision of Act 511; And approve the amusement tax of 5% for Lower Providence Township and 10% for Worcester Township under the provision of Act 511. May I have a motion? Mr. McGinnis? May I have a second? Ms. Graff? Any comments from the board?
I just want to make a clarification. When you read through that, you, it sounded like you were saying the last three items were underneath the first item, and that's how I, I'm looking at your paper, that's how it looks, but that's not, that's not accurate. It's actually four separate items associated with the approval. So I just want to make it clear for the board that it's on the agenda properly, but the copy that you have, it's not. So I do apologize for that. I just want to make sure everybody knows it's actually four separate items.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries eight, zero. Thank you very much. Next is the Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 2303 in the amount of $304.62 for the Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion for 2023-2024 as attached? Mr. Brookstool? May I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any comments from the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries eight, zero. Thank you very much. Now, it is courtesy of the floor an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are, are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Is there anybody for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Jim Beam, Worcester. I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Winters. It was very clear you were going to pass the budget. We all knew that. But I'm thinking of the community here, the people who are watching on that, on that video. There's an awful lot of jargon that's being used. I've attended Finance Committee meetings. I know what you're doing. I commend Mr. Bricker. Mr. Bricker does a fine job in my judgment on this. But there's too much jargon. People don't know what Series 300 and Series 400 mean. People don't know what ESRS grants mean. I think we owe it to the community to make it even more clear and dummy it down, if you want to use, I'll use that term, to do whatever we can to make it as clear as possible to our community exactly what we're doing. This is a lot of money, over $126 million. You believe it's justifiable. I understand that. You passed it eight to zero. But the community really needs and deserves to know more about just how it's broken down. And the presentation, in my judgment, was fine, but boy, it was quick, and it went right through, just like he did at the Finance Committee meeting. But for people watching out there who have not done those things, they're not as familiar with this, and I really think we owe it to the community to provide even more clarity to what we're doing with our community's money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor?
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Have three items to bring to your attention. The personnel section of this evening's agenda includes the hiring of a summer employee and by the name of Andrew Bricker. includes the hiring of a summer employee by the name of Andrew Bricker. I wonder whether he is a resident of Methacton. As I understand it, there's an implicit requirement that students offered summer work in Methacton be Methacton students. I wonder how many jobs at Farina have been utilized, summer students, over the last five summers? There's no mention of the hours worked per week. I think a healthy boy can easily work 60 hours a week and have some fun that the rest of the week. But I think that's that's not what's contemplated here. And I wonder how many other applications were submitted for summer employment work? The we're made aware that the high school swimming pool has a serious leak. The last number I heard was 1,500 gallons a day. And there's no no indication of finding where those leaks are. And I disagree with that strongly. One solution is to drop the water level a foot and study what what the leak rate is. And if it's still 1,500 gallons a day, drop it another foot, et cetera, et cetera. Certainly, we can find where the leak is, and we need to. Also, relative to the agendas, which most people read online ahead of meetings, I think we're getting negligent relative to committee reports. I think the committee reports on the property, finance, and policy meetings can be made available at the time of the presentation of the work session, such as we have later on this evening. Member board board directors who are not associated with particular committees don't have access to those reports.
Thank you for your comments.
Jim Malik, Worcester, again. I'm not confused about what you guys are doing. It's pretty simple. What you're doing is spending more money. And the more money you get, the more money you spend. Give me an example of when you got more money and you didn't spend it. That's what you do. Typical government, more money, you spend it, and that's the way things are going here. The way I look at it, Mr. Bricker in his presentation, I think the total number of excess money or excess revenue is close to, what? 10 to 13 million, right? On top of that, this you have a close to $3 million surplus. And that's not enough? That's you want to raise taxes 3.1% when you got close to $15 million of new extra revenue? What does that say? Tells me that you guys don't know anything about fiscal responsibility. That's what it says to me. And it's not confusing at all that all you guys keep doing is spending more money. Every year you guys have been here, care people that are still left, have raised taxes on everybody, despite your claims that, you know, you were upset with the prior board for raising taxes. Spend more money. And you're spending our money is what you're doing. I heard something about the aging infrastructure. Well, Worcester Elementary is not aging infrastructure. Eagleville is not. Skyview is not. Arrowhead is not. Audubon, not renovated, what, 10 years ago? You know, I don't know what we're talking about. We're talking about being worried about aging infrastructure. If you would maintain your infrastructure, maybe you wouldn't have a problem. It seems to me we have a maintenance problem with the infrastructure and your plan to deal with that. And I know that through all my right-to-know requests. It's a no-brainer. Why maintain it when you can just say, let's just build a new school? Just don't maintain it. Wait for 20, 30, 40 years, then just build a new one. It's cheaper to do it that way. I got I got time left, babe. I got 40 seconds. You talk about your millage and brag about your millage increase over five years, and the percentage is so low. You guys are top 10 in the state for cost per pupil per year. But you don't even want to talk about it. You're bragging about your millage. It's always a percentage of what? You guys have too much money. You spend it, and the people who suffer are senior citizens, people on fixed incomes, and the taxpayers. Because what are we getting? We getting some great ranking? Thanks.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor this evening? All right. Any comments from board members?
I do want to apologize to Mr. Andrews as I did not get my finance committee meeting minutes done this month in time for today's meeting. We had committed to do that. So I readily admit, Mr. Andrews, I did not do that. So I apologize.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? All right. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting? Mr. McGinnis, may I have a second to adjourn? Ms. Graff? Special meeting is adjourned. We are going to go right into the work session. So I would like to call to order the June 20, 2023 work session of the Methacton Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge. All right. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, still eight members in attendance. Ms. Cancro is excused. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of presentations. But first, we have Mr. Steve Savitz, our department chair of the Science Department at the high school, here to share with you and some guests the Electric Car Club update. Mr. Savitz, and I got to get you this, so just.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to share a great project that we just finished and give a couple shout-outs to a lot of people that helped make this happen. This is a Triumph Spitfire. It's the first car the Electric Car Club converted from scratch. So in the past, we've gotten cars donated, and we've always tweaked them. But we always had the interest of what if we built one from the beginning? And this is the final product that you're looking at. It was on display at a Spitfire car show a couple weeks ago. And I just wanted to kind of go through the story. It started at the Philadelphia Auto Show. We were invited there earlier, and we were showing off some of our other vehicles. And Mike Kempster, who couldn't make it today, but he had a son who's in eighth grade, walked into the box truck you're looking at. It's a little renewable energy classroom and said, I have a son who's in eighth grade, and I have two Spitfires. I'd like to donate to the Electric Car Club if you would convert them or convert it to become electric. Just to give you a timeline, his son Ryan is now a junior at Penn State. Okay, so nothing goes very quickly in this, but it does come to completion. So he gave us the two cars. All right, the one on the left had a perfect frame, and the one on the right had, as you can see, a perfect body, but it did not have a perfect frame. So the first thought was we have to make one car from two. And just thanking administration, I mean, Dr. Gravenese, and, you know, giving me the freedom to just go and create, and Tim allowing me to purchase things from all over the world. W9 forums, I'm very familiar with that is. And and then Dr. Zerby greenlighting the communication between us and the North Monaco, the technical school. So we contacted them and said, here's a project, and maybe we can have some of the students at North Monaco work in collaboration with the students at Methacton since, you know, we're a high school club, and we need their skills, and we also need their tools. Everyone green-lighted it, and off we went. So we brought the cars to North Monaco. We wheeled it in. And then, how do you do this? Well, enter Bill Kirkpatrick, a superhero, seven mechanics in one. He was a teacher at North Monaco for 30-plus years. North Monaco put me in contact with him. He had just retired, and he had completed workshops before where they had built cars over weekends, electric cars. And so we began our relationship with the club, and this is how we would start every day. And Bill would have a game plan and say, here's the project, and work through each of the goals. So the first was to take the body off of the yellow car who just could get to the frame. So with the kids getting training on what needs to be removed, what tools, there's the frame from that yellow car and painted. And then we started to then put the components of the electric conversion onto the frame and then enter the second car where we had to remove the frame from that. And then after quite a bit of time, we actually had a big day here where you put the one car together on top of the other. And it wasn't electric at all yet, but we had one car. And onwards we went. So we started to put the electric motor in. And then we had to start with the batteries. And I remember Bill, on this day, just brought in a bunch of cardboard. And the kid's like, what are we doing? And he's like, well, we're going to make batteries out of cardboard the same size of the batteries that we need to put in the car so we can move them around and figure out where to put the batteries. The batteries to the left are each 65 pounds. So to manipulate them all the time would be, you know, an issue. So the kids built, as you can see in the second picture, once we figured out where the 12 batteries were going to go, then came time to build the supports and the frames. And you can see the students learning to work on tools they never thought they would work on and get experience in that fashion. So we had to support the batteries and their weights so you can see them doing that as they're building it. And then slowly, the batteries started to emerge. And in the spots, we planned them. You can see them in the back and then putting them in the side, behind the driver's seat and the passenger seat, and then in the front. So everything was up and running. We had the batteries. So now we had the kids do more research of what other materials do we need? What do we need to order? And then what other tools do we need to manipulate that so it works into the car? And that led us to the wiring on the top left. Jake Hamburg, who is here, has been with the club for four years. So Bill would always say, Jake, you have that wiring diagram memorized? And just always hand it to him. And Ananya, who is on the right, she is also here. And she was practicing how to solder the wires together as they were practicing to get ready to implement the rewiring. And then you can see the students working on just following the wires and tracing and trying to make sure one is working with the other and the lights are working. And sometimes the positions were for only a certain few that could bend their body in those special spaces. But they did it. And then the wiring came to fruition. And then they're putting in the controller. This was the piece that set us back quite a while. The controller is pretty much the brains. It's the computer that coordinates everything inside the electric car. And we couldn't get it to work. I almost felt Bill was ready to retire from us with the frustration we were causing. So we sent it, the controller, to a person in Michigan who sent it back and said, it's fine. And then Bill had the idea of taking it to the place that builds the controllers in Hershey. So we sent it there. They sent it back. They said, it's fine. So we're like, what's going on? Because this, the car can't work without this piece. And then the business in Hershey was so interested in our project that they actually had three people working on solving it for us. And it was, there's no cost. So it was just a great, the idea of taking a village. Everyone was buying in, and then they solved the problem. And then the car started to run. And that's the message we sent back to the company. And then they had a story on their website about the whole story itself. And now the car is running. And this is Daniel and Jake at that Spitfire show just educating the public one car at a time, which is our theme about this conversion. And there were over 200 cars there, but none of them are electric and none were of a conversion. So it was a great time for them to kind of share. So it's just a great process from beginning to end was six years. Four years building it at North Monaco with COVID stopping and starting us. And just wanted to, while I'm talking a little bit, just give a couple of big thank yous. You know, Jake and Ananya and Kartika, you know, the time, you know, we work Thursdays from 2:30 to 5:30. And then we work in the summers. It's incredible hours to make something work. And the patience of taking a step forward and two steps back at times was frustrating, but a great learning experience. And then the biggest shout-out to Bill. None of this would have happened without his patience. And, you know, he is working with students at North Monaco, having expertise and teaching them with the tools, but then having kids come in from a club in Methacton and using a hammer for the first time was just, you know, a great learning experience for them to get up to the part where they were arc welding and just doing incredible things with his guidance and patience. And just wanted to make sure that you got a great shout-out because this wouldn't have happened. It's almost street legal. Otherwise, I would bring it outside and show it to you. But I give I did give Dr. Zerby and Tim a little ride around the parking lot so they could attest that it is working. But in the near future.
And it moves. Yeah. The vehicle moves. I mean, like, it's unbelievable. Mr. Savitz, I can't tell you how impressed I am with the work that you've done and the collaboration with the with the students and the volunteers. It's just tremendous.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's incredible to take something and build it from scratch. And it was just incredible for Bill to guide us for those four years. And just wanted to share that story with you. Thanks.
Comments from members of the board? Ms. Reese?
Just real quick, so many lessons, just in everything, the collaboration, the problem-solving, the tenacity, and just everything. Really incredible. So Jake is just graduated? And then the other two students with us are graduating or? Juniors, okay. So we have you for another year. Great. And Jake, what are you going to study in the future?
I'll do electrical engineering in Monaco and then transfer to graduate.
Awesome, awesome. And I assume this is Bill?
Yes.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. And of course, you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to my left?
Just thank you for this great work. This was so impressive to see and so interesting. And I love the collaboration with North Monaco. And just thank you for all the time and dedication you put into this.
Thanks.
Congratulations. I do have a question. How long does the charge last? I'm very curious. This is amazing.
Well, it's still a prototype. We haven't had a chance to fully discharge it yet. I mean, our thoughts is probably 70, 75 miles per hour. And, you know, maybe somewhere between 70 and 100 miles per charge. So maybe six to eight hours to charge it.
Very cool. Thank you.
I just want to make it clear we were not going 77 miles an hour on the. It moves. Oh, yeah, I mean, it had a lot of pep. I mean, if you you've been in Teslas and things like, I mean, the torque exchange there is impressive.
Mr. McGinnis?
I'm sorry. A great presentation. Thank you. I never knew this existed. What's next? And what do we need to get you to find what's next? Any ideas or thoughts, or are you done?
Yeah. I guess the first question is, is Bill done? We were probably 95% done with this. You know, we still want to tweak the brakes, the lights. We have the car cover to put on it. So there's still probably a good few months left here. There is a van that the school donated to us for the next conversion, if we go that way, that's sitting in the back parking lot. So we do have a vehicle. It's just the next question of what to do with that.
I won't be here when you're doing it, but as a member of the public, I would fully support this. I think this type. I think this type of learning is irreplaceable. And I don't know if the students would attest to that literally hands on to your point, learning how to use a hammer from the ground up. And all of a sudden you're, you're wiring a car. That's, that's second to none. So kudos to all of you involved. A very proud moment. Thank you for this presentation. It was awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Any final comments from members of the board?
Mr. Savitz and students and teachers, thank you so much. Now, if we were having this meeting at the high school, I would have then invited you for a ride. The, the problem is, as Mr. Savitz explained to me, this, the car is not street legal yet. So, and I say yet, but at the end of the day, if, if you're on the high school campus and you happen to see Mr. Savitz or you'd like us to have you see the car personally and possibly even get a ride in it, please, you know, work through Beth in my office and we'll get, we'll get some, something arranged for you. Okay? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have a volunteer firefighter presentation. And I'm going to start by introducing Mr. Regina, who will introduce our guests and the folks that will give our presentation this evening.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So this past school year, Chief Lentz and Battalion Chief Davis came to see Dr. Zerby and I. And we're talking a little bit about some of the needs and interest on increasing the volunteer firefighters and kind of sharing this information with some of our student body. What we weren't aware of were all the opportunities that would exist for our students when entering this field. So we started a great partnership with the help naturally of Dr. Gravenese and a few teachers at the high school. And to share that with you today, I'd like to invite Battalion Chief Davis from the lower Providence Fire Department and Battalion Chief Riquet from the Worcester Fire Department. So gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. My name's Alex Davis and I'm privileged to represent the lower Providence Fire Department tonight to speak a little bit about the opportunities that we would like to partner with Mathacton School District Staff Students Administration on. With me is Battalion Chief Riquet of the Worcester Fire Department. Together we provide the first due coverage to the Mathacton School District area from a fire and rescue perspective. I'll start by introducing my organization. Brandon will introduce his and then we'll walk through what our approach was, what led us here, what we did this past May and what we plan to do going forward for our students. Like I said, I represent the lower Providence Fire Department, first due coverage responsibility in lower Providence Township. We have two fire stations, one in Eagleville, one in Audubon. And we run about 700 emergency calls a year and all things fire and rescue in lower Providence. We have an active staff of volunteers of approximately 25 and they carry the load for those 700 calls night and day throughout the year.
Brandon Riquet, Battalion Chief, Worcester Volunteer Fire Department. The Worcester Volunteer Fire Department provides primary fire and rescue services for Worcester Township, approximately 16 and a half square miles for a population of over 10,000 people. We run approximately over a little over 300 calls a year. We have one station on Valley Forge Road, operate a fleet of eight vehicles. And we meet on Thursday nights for our training and business meetings. We can actually go to the next slide here. So looking at the volunteer fire service, I think one of the biggest challenges is that we have, and you can ask any department leadership, is people don't realize that their, their local volunteer fire department is volunteers. They, they call 911 and they expect a truck to come. They don't really put any thought into who's coming, that people are leaving dinner in the middle or waking up in the middle of the night or dropping what they're doing at work to come and help. And most of our area in the state rely on volunteer firefighters. Approximately 90% of fire departments in our state alone are volunteer. And with that is really where our concern is. In 1970, there was approximately 300,000 volunteer firefighters in Pennsylvania. And today there's about 38,000. So as you can see, there's, there's a huge discrepancy. And when we get into call volume, call volumes go up year after year and they're continuing to do so. And fire departments are continuing to ask to do more and more. I can speak specifically for Worcester Township being the only primary emergency services is actually based in our township, given that we are covered by the state police and we rely on area ambulance service. Besides fire calls, we're relied on a lot more directing traffic or running medical calls, stuff of that nature. The, the decrease in volunteer firefighters is probably, we could just talk about that for a very long time. But summary is people got a lot of time to do a lot of other things. They have busy lives. We have a rise in dual income households and the training standards for our firefighters has greatly increased from where it was in that 1970, when we were looking at those 300,000 volunteer firefighters. So this really focuses on a need for increased focus in volunteer recruitment campaigns, volunteer incentives, and hiring paid firefighters to, to fill any shortfalls. I think we missed a slide. Oh, sorry, I skipped over this. So talking about junior firefighting programs in both departments, members of our community had the opportunity to join when you are 14 years old. And these programs are really governed by PA child labor laws that specifically relate to the fire service. Members in the programs, both at Worcester and lower Providence, partake in these programs under very close supervision. But junior members are able to train and respond to active emergency calls alongside our fully trained firefighters. And they operate in restricted and supervised environment. So an example of that would be a building fire. We're not asking our junior firefighters to run into the building and put the fire out. But they are, after proper training, can conduct actual skills on the fire ground, connecting to a fire hydrant, pulling a hose, getting equipment for firefighters. I can kind of relate that to the board in a personal story. When I was a Mathacton student and I believe 11th grade, I was studying for a chemistry test and I had just joined probably two years prior. And we got dispatched to a house fire right next to Worcester Elementary School. And as a, just an 11th grader at Mathacton, I got on the truck and my job was to connect the hose to the fire hydrant to give us water to the trucks. That's the type of opportunities that our students have. And again, while they're not running into the building, they're vital tasks that they can then free up a fully trained firefighter to go into the building. And then hopefully one day they're that fully trained firefighter. From a perspective of where both programs are right now, Worcester currently has 10 junior firefighters. We also have 14 current firefighters that started in our junior firefighter program. And out of our operational officers, from the chiefs, the assistant chiefs, the captain, lieutenants, five of them were started as our junior firefighters in our junior firefighter program. When you're looking at lower Providence, they currently have four junior firefighters and they also had four that just graduated the fire academy. So they went from junior firefighter to fully trained firefighters. And all five of their chief officers began in the fire service. So I'll turn it over to Chief Davis now to talk about what we're hoping to move towards.
Thanks, Chief. So we had approached Dr. Zerby back earlier in the spring, under the premise that there's only one place that we can mint new firefighters. And that's people that have enough time to go through the training requirements to become firefighters. And when you start looking at society in today's day and age, that really looks at high school students. Most of the folks that we get coming in the door that stick around are high school students. So the fire department had a very vested interest in partnering with Mathacton to bring new firefighters in to support the critical mission that we, that we uphold each day. On the flip side, I live and work in corporate America as an adult, but I learned problem solving and decision making under pressure, networking, leadership from the fire department. Lower Providence pays a volunteer incentive so we can have folks that are studying for college, go into class, coming back and sleeping at the firehouse, making a few bucks to do it. We believe that, you know, by our nature, community service is important. We have a bunch of community servants in front of us. So I'm certain that you all understand that and we'd like to instill that in our students. And not the least of which of the benefits is the camaraderie of the fire service. And as a personal tale, I started as a firefighter in Melbourne, but when I moved to lower Providence, I lost my father about a month later. And I had people showing up from lower Providence that I had never met before at his services. And, you know, that's just indicative of the way that we operate. So what we were trying to do is pique interest, right? Firefighting can be cool. Firefighting can be interesting, but it's time consuming. It's dangerous. It requires sacrifice in other areas. And as mentioned before, between the two departments, running 1,000 calls a year, my wife and, and my kids would prefer if I could take a night off sometimes. So we need more firefighters. So really with the administration's support and, and Dr. Gravenese as well, we hatched a plan where we brought 16 students down to lower Providence Firehouse in May and we gave them a little pump up video and answered some questions about what we do and who we are. And then we took them out in the parking lot and they got to cut a car apart the way we might on a, on a vehicle extrication. They got to flow a hose line that we might use to put out a fire in a building. And they got to force a door the way we might need to if we encountered a locked building we needed to make our way into. From that, Worcester got two applications from the crew and lower Providence got two as well. I have met them. They are excited. We are too. And we're most excited that we can continue to perpetuate this relationship. Here's a couple of photos from the day. I'm going to speed through this in the interest of the time. But you can see some friendly faces up there getting, getting to do a few things. We had a perfect weather day, which, which really helped us out a lot. And then we fed them some pizza, gave us some T-shirts and handed them some applications, provided contact information and said, call us. We will answer your questions. If your parents are concerned, they can call us. We'll answer their questions. As a community organization, our students, our staff, our families are all welcome at the firehouse all the time. To wrap it up, we did a debrief following the event. I think both parties felt that it was successful. So we're going to do another fall recruitment day of similar agenda in October. We're actually going to do that at Worcester's firehouse, right? So we're giving people experiences at both firehouses that serve the community. And we're tentatively going to plan a spring day. And it's my understanding on October 1st that the 10th through 12th grade students have some testing and the ninth grade students will cycle through classrooms to examine careers. And as Brandon alluded to, as the call volume has risen and the volunteer base has dwindled, the need for career firefighters in this area is as high as it's ever been and rising. And so what students can, can get in addition to college as a college alternative, as a hobby, as a passion, is training and skills that they could turn around and parlay into a job at some point if they so chose to. And the, you know, not dissimulate to probably the environment with teaching staff, the environment with firefighters is that we can't find them and we need them. Because as Brandon alluded to, no matter the time of day, when you call 911, you expect someone to come and we need folks to come with us. So that's the conclusion of our presentation and we're super appreciative for the partnership and the support that we've received from the administration, the staff. And we're thrilled to take students under our wing and make them tomorrow's firefighters.
Thank you very much. And thank you, first of all, thank you for your commitment to our communities. We really appreciate that. Questions or comments from members of the board? Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for coming here and I, I am aware of the need for more firefighters through my work. And I'm just supportive of the great work that you do and I'm very supportive of, of this program through the administration. I have one, a couple of questions. One, has this partnership, has this, is this new for, between the departments and Mathacton?
Yeah, formally it's new. It's an idea that was hatched earlier this spring.
Okay, great. And then just a question on, given the age of some of the students, is there a restriction on the time of day that they're allowed to go out?
Yes. Depending on age, there's labor laws that, that have that. And then the departments will also have policies as well that at a minimum match the law, right? And that, and, and in some cases are a little more conservative to try to win favor of families and keep students, you know, enough rest as we know that's critical.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Ms. Purdue?
And I do want to say thank you all. So you guys actually have one of my boys there. He was very excited. I didn't even know, he found out about it from Cub Scouts. So it may be something that I know it's early on in elementary levels, but something that we can also communicate at our level, right? Just to get them maybe thinking about it as the time come. Because I think as soon as he turned 14, he brought me to the office and we got his badge. I'm sorry, his work permit and he started and he, he's having a good time there. So I do appreciate that we are formally putting a program in place at the school because I know we have some students that participate in it now. So it's nice to have it and have the partnership. I do have a question just because I'm thinking about, I know some, we have some girls that recently graduated that were part of it also. Once they graduate, what are the opportunities, like in reference to staying within the position that they're doing? Are they able to come back and still volunteer? I'm just wondering what that looks like.
Yeah. So I think it's going to be department specific. So I'll address lower Providence. Once you attain a minimum level of training, you become a certified firefighter. And then we have certain annual requirements to keep us fresh, but that pales in comparison to the initial training. So we have folks who will commonly go away to college and come back in the summertime, move back or folks that move away and come back years later. And so if you're trained in your current, then we want you. So is that fair for Worcester?
Yeah. So at Worcester, we try to keep in mind and try to retain our students that go to college specifically. So for those annual refreshers Chief Davis spoke to, at Worcester, we require all of our interior firefighters that went to the fire academy to actually do a structure burn each year to keep their skills fresh. And when we schedule that, we purposely schedule that to be like the first or second week that college students get back. So we retain them. There's no requirements. We try to be accepting the fact that they're not going to be around when they're in school. And then, you know, when they're on break, we eagerly take whatever time that they can give us. I think though, you spoke to opportunities. The one thing that I try to stress when we recruit juniors, and I know that when I was in their shoes, I really didn't care about life after high school because it's just something that, you know, kids that age don't think about. But I would really like this program to be thought as just another extracurricular that the school district offers for the sole reason that these departments have a lot of people in them and a lot of people in the community that do a lot of things. There's business owners, police officers, people in the medical profession, both of ourselves in corporate America, HVAC, the trades. And when I was younger, I used that to my advantage and I watched countless other younger members use that to their advantage when they're looking at job opportunities, career opportunities. And they have a lot of advocates in our community to kind of push them to excel. Where others at their same age might not have those same connections simply for the fact that, you know, they're not out there networking like some other kids have since, but they've been 14 and 15 years old, showing that they can take on responsibility.
And I do just have one more. If there's parents watching and they're interested in, you know, telling their kids about it, what's the best way to reach out?
I would go to either of the fire company's websites and there's a form to be filled out there. And if they mention Mathacton, we'll certainly communicate back with you all that the partnership is, you know, generating the effort we hoped.
And I do have one for Dr. Gravenese in reference to, just because I know there's community service hours that they need to accumulate. What is the process like and are, are you changing up the process a bit to ensure they are capturing those hours?
Hi. So our community service right now is run through our school counseling office. And so this would certainly count as community service hours. When students achieve, off the top of my head, I want to say it's 30 hours, they receive a quarter credit. So this certainly would qualify for that. We are just excited to be able, of the 16 students that went, a quarter of them have signed on. Our plan is to share this with all of the ninth grade in October and hope that those numbers will obviously multiply.
Thank you, Ms. Purdue.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I jump in? Cause I have a question for Dr. Gravenese too. So I'm always the more guy. So I'm thinking more, right? Three engagements, upcoming events. Don't take this negatively, guys. This is fantastic. Thank you for everything you do. Can we contemplate this as a club? Could we contemplate this as some sort of course credit? I mean, I never put out a fire in my life, but I know there's a ton of science behind it. And to your point, is there a volunteer component? I would look big picture and put a lot of pieces of this puzzle together. Because yes, we had 16 people and 25% signed up. Let's, let's just do the math, right? Let's get 100 people sign up and get 100 people sign up and 25, you know, that, that kind of thing. So I know you guys have day jobs. I know you have a lot going on. Dr. Gravenese, I know you have a ton and you didn't come to this meeting to get more work on your plate. But I would look bigger picture on this and with our support, again, curriculum, club, credits, hours for volunteering and put this mosaic together as opposed to just three singular events. And to Ms. Purdue's point, start them young. You know, listen, I'm 53 years old. I still get excited when I see a fire truck. So let's bring a fire truck to school, you know, talk about the, the math, talk about the science, talk about everything behind it. And now we have a class as opposed to just this three, three events per year. So thank you for everything you do. No answers right now, Dr. Gravenese. Maybe noodle it. Maybe we come up with something. We put something on a whiteboard and, and it looks like something we can work with. But thank you, everybody.
Yeah, Mr. McGinnis, those are great comments and we appreciate that. This, in all fairness, we sat down, had a meeting, they gave us a problem. Mr. Regina ran with it and, and, and we're there. So any more of those ideas, we want, we want them from you. We want them from anyone else. Cause I think we got a, we have an opportunity here. This is. Uh, this is, this is something that, you know, is, is, is wholesome and good and not only for education, but, uh, for the, for the backbone of our community, so this is huge.
Yeah, for clarity, there was no negative connotation in my comments at all and it just, I don't think you did, but in case somebody's out there, oh, this guy's bitching and moaning again, I'm not. I think, I, I, I want to help you, those, those numbers are stark and, and you look at volunteerism on the entire spectrum, you know, we're really close to not being able to have Little League baseball pretty soon, in about 10 more years when these umpires pass away because no one's doing it. So I'm all for it, whatever we can do to help, you have personally my full response, my full, um, support.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Reese?
Um, in full transparency, I have a very selfish question. Ms. Purdue asked, you said you go on the website and fill out the application. I literally just texted my 15-year-old son and he's in. Um, so I'm going to have him fill it out probably tomorrow because we always say we're going to get out of here early and we never do. So I will, um, I will, um, have him fill it out tonight, but, um, and because, you know, there's, to Mr. McGinnis's point, I think it's awesome that you had 16 children, you know, 16 students come, four sign up, right? That's four you didn't have before. Um, but once they fill out the form, then somebody calls them. Okay. And his name is Davis, by the way, so you should remember that.
That will ring a bell, yeah. Yeah, they fill out an interest form on the website and we have everybody go through an application process, including background check, child abuse clearance, that type of stuff. We vote them in as members and they begin their training journey and they can kind of start to learn the organization and pick and choose where they want to fit in.
And just on a, a note, you know, it's, I, we do appreciate not, of course, all of your time, all the time, but thank you for coming here. I know the firemen had come here once before, but we were on Zoom. I don't know what they came for, I'm embarrassed to say that, but I grew up in Philadelphia, so my father was a, I, I take advan, I take for granted the volunteer, um, fire here and I apologize for that because I grew up in Philadelphia where that was their job. And, and so I, I am guilty of that. I've lived here 20 years and I do take advantage of the fact that I drive by your station and I forget about the fact there's volunteers being called out of their dinner, so thank you very much.
Ms. Reese, remember, you're doing something about it right now, you're having your son volunteer, that's excellent. Ms. Graff?
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you so much for coming. As the child of a volunteer firefighter chief, I understand firsthand what you guys, you know, the time and the effort and the amount of sacrifice your families put into this because there's lots of times when you just can't be there because you need to help someone else. And so I just want to say thank you to you and your families because I know it's a lot to ask. Um, but I was also curious about the idea that what about someone who may not necessarily have an interest in being a firefighter, are there other ways you could have volunteers support the fire company and the organization that could be maybe auxiliary support?
Yeah, so a couple of things, and I think it rings true for lower Providence mostly as well. At Worcester, we have firefighters, um, but another emergency role we have is fire police. I mentioned earlier with, with just state police coverage, our state police rely on the fire department to provide primary, uh, accident traffic control. Um, so we rely heavily on our fire police. So individuals that aren't really looking to run into a burning building or do something super physical, get involved with our fire police unit. We also have administrative members, so those members really focus, um, on, they might serve on some committees, uh, help with some fundraisers, uh, some events, maybe some upkeep around the station, stuff of that nature. And then we also have a ladies auxiliary that's actually a separate entity from the fire department and their sole purpose is fundraising so that our firemen don't have to spend time fundraising. Um, so those, those three are, are great options for those that, you know, don't want to get on the fire truck.
Thank you so much, that's really great.
Excellent question. And Mr. Winters?
Yes, of course, thank you. Um, I, I might understand is that you are recruiting very early because I think St. Andrews Vacation Bible School had you, um, this week as heroes, so I, that's really going early. Uh, so congratulations on the recruiting efforts. Um, I think, Ms. Reese, I got half a memory. I believe there was something to do with some type of tax benefit. Uh, so I don't know, Dr. Zerby or, uh, Mr. Regina, that's something that we can advertise a little bit was the benefit of, uh, volunteering. I don't know if it necessarily affects us 14-year-old, but it could affect your voluntary rate. So it's something that we could either put in the lower Providence newsletter or Methacton newsletter, whatever, and just get, uh, help support, you know, um, joint communications, I guess. Thank you.
It was an Act 172 EIT rebate for volunteers.
Seeing it, no other questions. Gentlemen, thank you so much for your commitment to our community and a commitment to this project. Dr. Gravines, as always, great work. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, Jack from Fidavia with the Arrowhead Construction Update.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I have a brief presentation here of the summer work going on at Arrowhead and Eagleville Elementary Schools. Uh, starting with Arrowhead, uh, we're looking to complete all necessary forebode corrective work by July 28, 23. That started yesterday. Complete all interior punch list items by the same date that started yesterday. Complete all site punch list items by that same date, which started yesterday as well. Uh, we want to work towards closing out the MPDES permit, obviously, and we want to complete the project, close out procedures, you know, such as warranty information, O and M's, attic stock, et cetera. Moving on to Eagleville, uh, we began the classroom unit ventilator modifications that started on Friday. Uh, the removal and disposal of existing terrazzo tile flooring, uh, that started yesterday. They're actually complete with the second floor already and moved to the first floor. And provide waterproof seal or on a new cast stone sills, that should say, I apologize. And that started today.
Thank you, Jack. Are there any questions from members of the board? To my right, seeing none, uh, to my left, seeing none. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Next on, uh, scheduled guests and, uh, speakers, Audubon School Property Update. Uh, board members, you should have a, a, I believe it's a, a five or six slide presentation here. Uh, we'll put it up on the screen, uh, but just so you know, this is really, uh, just a, a quick summary, uh, to keep everyone in the public apprised, this, this will be posted, uh, to the board presentations area of the, of the district website, uh, tomorrow. But generally speaking, if you would just turn to slide, um, slide four, it goes over the summary. And I just want to kind of reiterate where we are in terms of, uh, the, the process over time. Uh, so we, you know, we, we have a, a, an Audubon school that was originally constructed in 1928 with four classrooms. It goes down and talks about the school being open-closed over a period of time. It talks about the appraisals on the existing property in 2018 and 2022. It talks about the, obviously the closure of, of the, of the, the building in 2017. It goes down and in summary fashion talks about, you know, the March 2023 where I provided a status update on the future educational use of the property, uh, once the, the board had decided already, uh, decided to, uh, have the, the building, uh, raised. Uh, we talked about a number of those things, where the athletic fields, movement of bus transportation, um, and, and ecological, uh, learning center as examples. Um, and then in May, I made announcement that there's going to be a delay in the demolition of the school. And then in June, which is, uh, tonight, uh, I, I want to move you to slide five if we could, and just tell you that, you know, given that we approved in November of '22 to have the Audubon, uh, building, uh, leveled, uh, and to require me to recommend something by July 31st of '23, uh, for the education use of that property. I just want to bring the board and the public up to date that leveling of the building will no longer be slated for June and, or July of 2023. Uh, there is, there was an uncertainty from the, uh, civil engineer about our ability to obtain the required county NPDES permit or the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit prior to the issuance of bids in the marketplace. That means that the updated timeline places bids on the street then in December of 2023 with a targeted demolition and final site grading, all to occur right around the same time in February, March of 2024. This delay will push the determination of the property use back to May of 20, I'm sorry, should be May of 2024, there's an error on that. And I'll, and I'll make that correction before posting the, uh, the item to the, uh, the website. And then the last slide, just give you an idea of what the costs are associated with that delay. So as you can see on the, the left-hand side, for the 2324 budget, we included about $75,000 in the budget to take care of things from water, sewage, natural gas, electricity, oil, insurance, maintenance, uh, meaning cutting the grass and things of that nature. Whereas on the right-hand side, the annual cost following demolition will be about, uh, about $50,000. So with that said, this will not be the last presentation for the board and is just a, a notice to make sure that everyone's apprised that A, uh, the demolition will be delayed and B, that our determination of the property, uh, will be pushed back into May of 2024. So with that said, are there any questions from members of the board at this time? Ms. Purdue?
I just have a clarification. So the delay in, so we don't, we won't have the permit, right?
We do not have the permit.
Yeah, and so that will be delayed, so then the determination of the property use is also delayed because?
Because we haven't leveled the building.
Okay, but you, I thought the plan was that you'll provide us with additional, um, recommendations on what, you know, recommendations for the property, right?
That's correct.
So I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to figure out, if the permit is delayed and that's, I think it, it seemed like that's nothing that we can control, why is the, um, determination also pushed so far out?
So i- i- in, in discussion, uh, with the, uh, the, the, the purp, the purpose was to come up with a educational use for the property once the, the facility was leveled. At this moment in time, I've shared pretty much everything that I can, uh, with the board back in March with respects to the general areas of interest in terms of use of that property. However, um, you know, the, the discussion that the board will need to have at some point, once the building is, is demolished, is to A, do they want to keep the property? Do they want to sell the property? And if they want to keep the property, what is it that we plan to use it for? Right now, until, and it, and it would be, it's my opinion that until you see the property leveled, until you see the property, uh, graded, until it gets to that state, making a determination that we're going to sell or we're going to keep the property and use it for something is rather premature. In addition to that, it gives me some time to give you, uh, some many, some other additional, uh, feedback or recommendations. Because we wouldn't be selling, we can't, if we make a determination today that we're going to sell the property before the building is demolished, it, it's still not, the building's still not demolished. I think it would just be, it would be premature to make that, make that determination until the building is down. Then it, then there's a certainty to the building being removed. Even though we have a plan to have the building removed, we also had a plan to have the building removed in June and July. So, you know, i- it, having those discussions about potentially selling the property or using it for something else other than what it currently is being used for, uh, until there, there's certainty around that determination, uh, i- i- it allows us to make that decision more clearly.
Are there more discussions, uh, I guess, property and property committee about determination for the building plan? Oh no. Are there more planned discussions to be held at property in reference to?
I mean, that there certainly can be, uh, right now, uh, the, the, the schedule is, is that the, uh, the, the, the bids will hit the market, uh, the marketplace in December. Um, we will receive bids. I imagine at that moment in time, we'll be taking those responses through the property committee and then through the board for, to finalize that, those, those contracts. And then from there, um, you know, o- other discussions may, uh, ensue. But I, I've said this, I've said this in other instances. I mean, I, I don't have a great, uh, educational use recommendation, um, at this time. And so while, while we can't act on any of the recommendations, uh, uh, until the building, in my opinion, until the building's down, it would, it would give us an opportunity to, as a community, as, as a superintendent, as a board, to think about what things we could do with that property. Because we, we know we're going to be maintaining it at least for another fiscal year. Yeah, Ms. Graff?
So, um, just to clarify, I mean, I think we've talked about a number of potential, um, things we could do with the property. Um, number one. Number two, if we were to sell the property, I think we would be deciding that based on what we could determine the value to be and the value in a year may be very different from what it is today. So to make a decision would be premature. And I think maybe the other thing we should be identifying here is that, you know, we're open to other suggestions, other ideas, other, you know, public input on this, if, if there's ideas out there, right? Um, so maybe my question is, what's the best way for those ideas to be brought forward?
I, I think it's, it's likely going to be, uh, an electronic suggestion box of some sort, um, and, and a continual promotion of, uh, in our communications to the public, uh, that your suggestions are, are requested. Um, and then we can filter those out and pass them along through the property committee, uh, to the, to the full board. Uh, but I, I'd prefer talking to my communications coordinator about how the mechanics of all that would work, but that's probably the best approach. It gets our widest net, uh, of people to, to give us feedback.
Okay, that sounds good.
Any, any other questions on the Audubon presentation?
Just when we're talking about getting input, I wonder if we could work with our townships and, um, you know, use their resources. I know that they have, uh, different, you know, come give us your idea events and maybe we could do something like that with them.
Yeah, we, we often do that because their, their reach is to different constituents. Uh, our reach is gen, has generally been to, you know, the families of students that, that, you know, attend Methacton schools. Uh, but their reach might be much broader, so that's a great idea. Thank you. With that said, the next item on the agenda is the facilities report and recommendations. So, uh, uh, Mr. Kenwood and I will, uh, go to the podium, uh, to present. This evening, our facilities director, Mr. Kenwood, and I will be providing an update and recommendations regarding facilities. So the board members, you should have a copy of this presentation. The presentation will also then be posted to the district website under the board presentations area. When, if you, if you turn to slide two, uh, the presentation is designed to move forward three recommendations for the board's consideration at the June 27, uh, voting meeting next week. First, to accept the facilities inventory assets with conditions as prepared by Bureau Veritas. Two, to authorize the administration to proceed with the development of a facilities master plan. And three, to authorize a superintendent to proceed with organizing a comprehensive facilities campus planning process for Methacton High School campus.
Methacton School District operates 10 buildings, seven of which are school buildings, a central administrative office, a facilities building and a transportation building. The last condition assessment study on these buildings was conducted in 2015 with a report from AEM Architects being accepted by the Board of School Directors in 2016. That assessment resulted in the production of a workbook of inventory and associated conditions that led to the development of a master facilities plan that we have been referencing ever since. that we have been referencing ever since. The master facilities plan was organized in this fashion depicted on the screen, using the inventory and conditions found in the binder called the workbook. Taking a closer look, you can see that the master plan is organized by year and by building and references the workbook entries and estimated dollars associated with the general description of the fixes and replacements. Here's another snapshot of the master facilities plan, seeing that we were estimating around $8.5 million of projects annually over the next 10 years. The plan projected to address 83.6 million in projects and saw projects moved forward and moved backward in a timeline, along with some additions based on given circumstances. As an example, the Eagleville facade was added based on an evaluation of the window issue. And through the discovery, excuse me, and through that discovery, we determined that a move from conducting the high school HVAC to addressing the windows facade and HVAC at Eagleville was a more appropriate matter to be organized and moved forward in the timeline. Since the development of the master plan, the district has invested over $58 million in our facilities with some of the projects listed here.
On Slide 8 of this presentation, nearly seven years ago, the 2016 Facilities Master Plan and our emergence from the pandemic, we found ourselves back at addressing the Mathacton High School HVAC. As you may recall, in 2020, the high school was originally slated for HVAC improvements. The original bids came in around $9.3 million with an estimated cost in 2023 of about $12.7 million. At this time, we then added other matters to the scope of work, including an additional boiler replacement, chiller replacement, generator replacement, and some pool HVAC modifications that pushed the estimated cost to about $17.2 million. I brought this matter before the construction team and at the time, reasoned bidding in the market suggested that the project would be more like $25 million, including the soft cost. After presenting this to the board, I recommended that we place the project, the Mathacton High School HVAC project on hold pending the outcome of a revised inventory with conditions and an updated master plan. On Slide 9, you may recall that we hired Bureau Veritas to conduct a facilities condition assessment of all district facilities. That work began in October of 2022 with a final summary reports for each building provided to the board in May of 2023. We then made final presentation to the property committee on 6/12/23. And during that, we identified that there are no life safety issues requiring immediate action. Two, we identified that Bureau Veritas summary presentation lumped multiple fixed replacement projects for years 0 through 2 with other high priority projects. And to clarify that, we believe that that will be better organized and resolved in the master plan development. The third item, we identified the high school and the administration building on the high school campus as having the highest facilities condition index figure in the next five years. We also identified that based on the facilities condition index of the high school, that further comprehensive review of the high school was necessary. We also know that the district is in the process of acquiring training on the use of the software. With the arrival of Mr. Kenwood, he's been working with the company to get that organized and have a team trained on the use of the Asset Calc software. And while this work completed by Bureau Veritas provides the district with a preventative maintenance routines that we will upload into our work scheduling system. And this is a huge benefit for developing a more responsive maintenance approach long term. Aside from the training on the software that has yet to be scheduled, Bureau Veritas has delivered on their work product as agreed. Our next step is to accept these conditions and to begin the development of the master plan. On Slide 10, you can see that the, this slide and as well as the next several slides simply show some of the resulting information from the Veritas work. Here is an estimation of the replacement value of each building that was part of the assessment. On Slide 11, this slide summarizes the facilities condition index rating and how that is calculated based on the ratio of immediate repair cost to the building's current replacement value. The indexes range from good to very poor, with good having an FCI between 0 and 5% and very poor condition having an FCI of greater than 60%. A good rating may simply require minor fixes or replacements, whereas a rating greater than 60 should be considered for replacement or major renovation. More so, facilities with a greater than 60% FCI should undergo a more extensive review and consideration of future investments into those facilities. On Slide 12, in this slide, taken from the Veritas presentation given to the property committee last week, illustrates a summary of the FCI for each of the buildings estimated over the next 20 years. As you can see, within five years, the administration building and the high school are the two highest need facilities. Furthermore, these indexes suggest that our pause on making the 17 to potentially 25 million investment into the HVAC at the high school was an appropriate decision, given the need for us to dive deeper into the high school facility to ensure that we are making good, sound investments, given the collective condition of the high school and its suitability for the next 50 years.
On Slide 13, the Veritas facility condition assessments provide an independent third-party inventory of assets and their associated conditions. It tells us what items we need to consider fixing or replacing and in what general timeframe for inclusion in a facilities master plan. It also tells us there are no immediate life safety matters identified. It tells us to take into consideration the facility replacement value when determining investment into facilities for fixes and replacements. And lastly, it provides us software to organize the fixes and replacements into projects for inclusion into a facilities master plan. On Slide 14, there are nine of these summary condition reports available. And each of the reports include an executive summary. They include building and site information, use, ADA accessibility, and obviously opinions of probable cost.
On Slide 15, the development of a master plan does not solely rely on the condition assessment summary reports, but merely utilizes the inventory with conditions along with consideration of the annual budget constraints, any priorities or organizations of fixes and repairs to leverage economies of scale, all within our ability to manage or oversee and complete projects. These five elements listed here on this slide, Slide 15, are combined to be used to formulate a solid master facilities plan. On Slide 16, finally, with regards to the development of the master facilities plan, it should be recognized how we are approaching the maintenance, fix, replacement of assets. So our two-part approach is broken down into maintenance versus fix and replacement. Under maintenance, we strive to achieve operational standards through the annual facilities budget and by dedicating internal staff and third-party firms with maintenance contracts. The Veritas work includes preventative maintenance routines and schedules that we are integrating into our work order assignment system. The fix replacement approach is further organized into two parts. The first being the capital project funds and the second being bond borrowing. Both are organized around a master facilities plan. So in order to address the projects listed in a plan, either small to medium facilities matters, we'll leverage the capital projects fund whereby an annual budgetary transfer to capital provides a reasonable means to address the matters over time while keeping costs in terms of interest and fees to a minimum. For larger projects identified under the master facilities plan, generally projects over $2 million, the district would seek bond financing. Again, those dollar amounts aren't officially set yet, but those are estimates based on what other districts in our area are using. But they will be established once the master plan is established for the next five to 10 years.
Our next steps, we are asking the Board of School Directors to accept the facility inventory of assets with conditions as prepared by Bureau Veritas and authorize the administration to proceed with the development of a facilities master plan as presented. That will include me as the facilities director, along with support from our owner's rep and other third parties. The plan will target the completion of the facilities master plan for all buildings except those on the high school campus for September of this year, 2023, with high school campus inclusion in the plan targeted for February 2024.
On Slide 18, additional next steps. Given to Mathacton High School, originally constructed in 1961, having a projected FCI of almost 60% within the next five years, with nearly $69 million in projected renovations, repairs, replacements outlined in the Bureau Veritas Facilities Assessment Report, is my recommendation that the board approve me to proceed with organizing a comprehensive facilities campus planning process for Mathacton High School campus. On Slide 19, this process will engage a stakeholder group. In my recommendation, it will be called the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee or the MHSCPC. That will review facilities reports, conduct site visits, solicit stakeholder and expert input, consider the educational vision and future delivery of programs, and present and communicate feedback to the public as well as to the board and to make recommendations to the Board of School Directors for consideration. On Slide 20, the composition of the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee includes the following volunteer stakeholder groups and individuals, along with experts and public input. They include students, parents, teachers, community members, school board members, school administration, directors, and individuals as listed on this slide. On Slide 21, the structure is organized, this committee's structure is organized as listed and includes an educational vision committee along with facilities condition committee to help form the best direction forward. There are a number of activities that these participants will be involved with. Some of them are listed here on this slide. And the goal, if approved, would be to build the committee through solicitation of volunteers this summer and begin work in September with a recommendation to the board in May of '24 and public review of that recommendation for feedback in June of '24. With that, I take you to the last slide of the presentation, which references the three recommendations that we would, that we have on the agenda for your consideration next week. With that, we'll open the floor to questions from members of the board. Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, thank you. Just in terms of history, I know we had that first facilities report 2016, 2017 that resulted in the master plan. Was there any master plan for maintenance or renovation prior like that was really methodical like that, that was assessing all of our facilities in a regular way prior to 2016, 2017? To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, yeah, to my knowledge, there was one other, you know, facilities report. It was, but when, you know, 10 years ago when I arrived, it was probably 10 years old at the time that I remember looking at it. And so I don't know of any other report that we've done to the extent of the 2016 report. And again, this 2022, '23 report is equally extensive.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate how we're doing this on a regular basis to make sure that we're hitting everything because things are new or, you know, you have new materials or new requirements or new codes. So I really appreciate that we're keeping up to date so that we're not blindsided by like the neglect that we saw in Arrowhead previously that led to the new building.
That's an excellent point.
And I just would suggest, when I'm looking at your timeline on Slide 22, I would suggest not to begin the solicitation of volunteers until September, just because of vacations. I just don't know if you'll get the robust response that you would like. And maybe tweaking that to begin your work, you know, mid to late October after you.
Your suggestion makes sense. And certainly, I, maybe we can do this in a two-step process. Start some of the solicitation, but also keep it open through September.
Yeah, you just want to capture that good population.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Perdue?
I just have one along the, I think it's that same one. So if, if we get the recommendation to the board in May, how is that lining up with, I'm guessing on the, on the next steps on Slide 17, in reference to target completion of master plan for September 2023 with the high school campus inclusion target for February 2024? So can you just review how that's working? Like what, what part of the high school are we targeting to be included in 2024 February if we are getting recommendation May?
Ms. Perdue, excellent question. Thank you for bringing that one up because there can be a little bit of confusion about this. What I want you to think about is there's, we're going to go down a parallel path. Mr. Kenwood will be working with the professionals to develop the master plan with the assumption, as you know, the master plan goes year by year, project by project, and, you know, has a run rate and all of that. So we believe that regardless of what the Mathacton High School Campus Planning Committee comes up with in May for a recommendation to the board, we will have developed by February a plan to include this campus if we continue to just keep going year after year with the work. So think of it actually as two parallel processes. One where we're going to, because there's so much information on this campus that the high school campus, it's going to take us time. The other campuses are less intense in our, in our opinion and review of the work that was provided to us. And really, we'll be able to conclude in May that, hey, you know, we have a recommendation from the High School Campus Planning Committee of X and we may like that and we can then compare it to what the, what a normal or regular master facilities plan process might look like over the next 10 years. So it actually gives us an opportunity to say, hey, we can do, we'll have all this information, we'll be able to say, we'll stay with the master plan process or we might want to do something different or think outside of that particular structure. So it's really, it's two different decision-making, information gathering points. And they're really independent of each other. But at some point, the board will be able to rely on all that information to make, you know, the best decision for our school community going forward.
And I just have one in reference to, I don't know if it's from the Veritas report on Slide 12. Is the year zero referring to, yeah, the year zero at the top? Is that referring to the year zero that they're concluding? Or is the five-year where we are now? I'm just trying to look at the two different marks.
It's kind of right, like right now.
So the five years where we are now?
No, the.
The year zero.
Year zero is where we are now.
Okay, that's why I wanted to clarify. Okay.
And the five years would be five years from now.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify that, just based on the numbers from the FCI score.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Ms. Reese?
I don't have any questions, but I'm just going to really quick give my input because I will not be here next week. Having been here quite a while and having some of my questions answered through property and having really thought about this, and I feel like we started a little bumpy with Veritas, just the way he was presenting before a lot of us understood what he was presenting and then presenting again, and it's so much information. So trying to be transparent makes it even trickier because when we did this eight years ago or seven years ago, there was this big book and nobody kind of went through the big book. So it's not easy to put these things out and make it 100% understandable and pretty. So having looked at it, redone it, re-gone through it, have Mr. Kenwood, yourself, our, you know, the owner's rep, with, when we talk about the budget tonight and all the taxpayer money, we can't do this alone and we can't just say, oh, guess what, guys? There's a lot of work that has to be done in the high school, right? So we have to do all of this background work because we are dealing with taxpayer money. So I am comfortable with what you're asking us to vote on next week. It makes sense. I did, I do think it started out a little rocky, but it's just because you're looking at, I'm sure, you know, what Mr. Kenwood does for a living, it's very difficult to be explain it in a 20-minute PowerPoint slide, you know?
Ms. Reese, if I could add, because I think you and I've had this conversation, so that, in all clarity, I think we all went into our agreement with Bureau Veritas with the expectation that we were going to come out of it with a facilities master plan. But I tried to explain here this evening that what they did is the same thing that AEM back in 2015, 16 had done for us, where they did the evaluation, provided us the workbook that you so eloquently, you know, remember. I mean, it was a big book. And right now Bureau Veritas has provided these reports and they provided a piece of software that has the same type of information as that workbook does. Now it's a matter of us taking this information and turning it into a plan of action that we can use to, you know, move forward with. So I think we all wanted the end result before we got to the pieces along the way that we really needed. So I think we're all in the same boat.
And, you know, I know I felt more comfortable going through that and learning that we did this before this because, you know, when we made decisions and sometimes we may be moved up one thing a year because you have this master plan. But now that we've taken care of Arrowhead, now, and we've taken care of Eagleville, and we've taken care of, I think someone in the public mentioned it earlier, we've been better at maintaining our buildings. We do maintain our buildings. The high school has been worked on since 1961, so it's not quite in the shape that Arrowhead was in. But we have this HVAC issue that we've known and due to COVID and Arrowhead, that HVAC system now and the master plan is one cog and we can't make these types of decisions without all these steps. And I appreciate all that that goes into. I support it, even though I can't vote on it next week. No, I would vote on it if I was here.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, for your feedback. And I just want to just make one other clarifying point, you know, and I hope it rang through in our conversation many months ago when we were first talking about the HVAC project at the high school. I really do believe we made a good decision, just pause and say, okay, what do we need to do here and to make the right decision, the right investment? Because it may be okay and it may be the right decision to, you know, have a facilities master plan that each year we're chipping away at the matters at the high school. But then, but you know what? If we don't take a step back and at least evaluate this from a different perspective, we'll never really know if that's the right investment. So we want to do these things so that we can make sure that whatever investment we do, A, supports the educational program for the district and the future vision for us going forward, as well as is the right investments, you know, that we can be confident that we're making the right investments. Because we, you know, we have a pool matter, we have HVAC matter, you know, the list goes on. But if you start throwing the money at it, at some point, you're going to find yourself knowing that you can't do anything else but continue to throw money at it. So you want to make the right decision before you go ahead and do that. Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Perdue's comment and maybe help to clarify. The recommendations are going to come to the board in, you know, the spring, May of 2024, and we will have the master facilities plan February timeframe. Will we then take those recommendations once the board has decided how to move forward and roll them back into the master plan so they become sort of one common plan that has all of the components in it? Or will we keep the recommendations from the high school campus planning committee as a separate sort of plan?
I think we need to make that decision in May when we see those recommendations because you may say, these are the best things since sliced bread and we want to do exactly what you're implying is incorporate them into the master plan. Or you may say, these aren't realistic and, you know, we're not going to do those things. So I think once we receive that information, I think that's when we make that determination. But a key element I want you to be aware of is we're phasing in the development of the master plan for really one reason. And while we're coming with all the campuses and the facilities except for the high school campus to you in September, it allows us to consider potential matters for the following summer, the summer of 2024. If we wait and get the whole plan together for all of the campuses and all the buildings, we may run a risk of not being able to get to the marketplace with potential bids and getting contractors and things of that nature to even start addressing some of the things on our other campuses, not just the high school campus. So that's the current idea so that we get to a point, we say, okay, here's a project. Maybe we need to do something at Skyview, Warrsester, whatever it may be. But we're not waiting till February when the whole thing is, you know, out of the water with never having a project for this following the '24 summer. So that's, I want you to understand why we're doing that. But we want to, once we get through the February timeline with the high school, is incorporate the high school with the rest of the campuses in a master plan overall. So that will be combined as part of that. But any ideas that come out of the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee will have to be determined to be infused into a master plan or maybe it's a standalone plan depending on what the information is and the recommendation at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Ms. Graff. Any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Cleary?
So I wanted to acknowledge my agreement with a member of the community earlier who spoke. What I took from that was we use a lot of acronyms that we need to start explaining better to the public. And as a new board member, you guys all know I have struggled with the acronyms. So I'm going to ask you to explain one, but then I also have a suggestion, and I'll start with the suggestion. I think we could probably do, or think about in our presentations that we put up, you know, on the board or for the public, to, instead of using the acronym the first time, at least state out what the acronym stands for, and then the acronym would go in parentheses and then you can, you know, do, at least then the public has a reference, including myself.
That's an excellent, we try to do that and.
I'm sure you do. There are so many acronyms.
No, great suggestion and it's what we've tried to do.
Even in the finance report, like ESRS, we could be putting in parentheses COVID grants or something in one spot, just, you know, for the public's. And PESRS, it's another one. I'm constantly looking that up until I get that memorized. Anyway, I digress, but I did agree with that comment. Can you explain, I think both for my benefit and for the public's, what FCI stands for and what it means? It was first on slide nine, if that's helpful to you?
Yeah, it did, the best slide to actually look at would be slide 11, which is the slide that talks about how FCI or Facilities Condition Index is determined. So it talks about, on slide 11, that the current, the FCI is the ratio of the immediate repair cost to the building's current replacement value. And then it talks about the percentages on the far right-hand side along with the condition rating and the definitions associated with that. We probably should have had this slide earlier in the presentation prior to slide nine, but I felt that this was important to make sure that, you know, we spelled the FCI part out here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from members of the board? If you do have any other questions between now and the voting meeting, that means you know how to get ahold of me. And Mr. Kenwood and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much. Madam President, that ends guests and scheduled speakers for tonight's work session. At next week's meeting, we will have the reports as listed on the agenda. Please know that one report, if the board will so allow, unless you want me to wait to the next meeting, I do have some information on accomplishments, if I may quickly read that. So I'd like to, first of all, let everyone know that I believe that we've had a great school year. And with that, I'd like to thank our students for their commitment to doing their very best each and every day. I would like to thank our teachers, our staff, our parents for their collective efforts, their willingness to give themselves for the betterment of others and for their enduring commitment to excellence. I want to thank my administration and this board for their leadership and commitment to our students, families, and our school community. Without this collective effort of all, I would not be able to share some of the 10 pages of highlights, accomplishments, and successes from this past school year. So while I thank you all, I'd now like to ask you just for just a few more minutes to share some of those highlights and successes. The first one, we implemented a successful full-day kindergarten program, 16 full-day kindergarten sessions, a huge accomplishment. And while I'm not going to elaborate on all these, I'm going to talk about this one. I will say that we've been trying for almost 10 years and this board was able to bring full-day kindergarten and my administration and our teachers were able to bring that implementation to a reality. So I want to thank everybody for all that they've done on that. We've trained volunteers for kid writing at all four elementary schools and we included residents in Shannondale as part of that process. We coordinated a successful math pilot program thanks to the leadership of Dr. Walsh, where we had 100% teacher buy-in for the iReady math program. We revised the program planning guide overview for distribution to eighth-grade students so that they and their families could, you know, have a better set of information in making their choices for high school selection. We completed year one of our district's K-12 DEI and climate counselor work. A lot more work to accomplish, but certainly it's all been good work and we appreciate the leadership of Dr. Angstad and Mr. Regina in support of Ms. Washington's work and the seven individuals in our buildings. We held two sessions with student voice days that were by far some of the most outstanding sessions that we've had with students this school year. We revitalized the STEM teacher certification program with Wilk University. We amended and extended the MEA teacher contract to include, you know, management rights in terms of languages as well as making the district more competitive in recruiting and retention of quality staff. We also did the same with the MESBA, our support union. We implemented frontline recruiting and hiring module and also frontline central to make our HR processes more effective and efficient. So I want to thank the leadership of Dr. Sorgini for his work in that area. We created and fostered a partnership with the local universities for undergraduate education majors at Gwinnett University and Asinus College. We completed the reunification training for all ERT team members. Over 100 employees were trained in that process. Thank you, Mr. Regina. We completed Act 55 training for all employees, all 650 employees. Another Mr. Regina, thank you. We implemented the positive pay into the accounts payable system, making our finance bills and payment process more secure. Thank you, Mr. Bricker, for taking leadership on that. We solicited and landed a third-party independent auditor following a previous auditor refusal to continue working with us. So Mr. Bricker was very, we were all very fortunate to land that audit firm. We coordinated the district-wide free breakfast program for all schools. We coordinated the food service review program that you had, an awesome presentation by our high school students just a few meetings ago. We had probably the best transportation start in our history and relationship with First Student. We renegotiated the contract with First Student to extend the contract and terms and make it more affordable in the future years. We activated bus patrol and additional reporting for the bus patrol service. We covered the Methacton students' parents kickoff for the Martin Luther King Day of Service with the sock roll challenge. I know myself and many board members participated in that process, so I want to thank you for your commitment during that important day. We implemented a weekly athletic news highlighting athletic accomplishments for the students. I got to thank our athletic director for taking the leadership on that. That was, that's probably, surprisingly, but not surprisingly, it's probably the most viewed publication that we have in the district. And we implemented the Raptor visitor system and volunteer management system. I need to thank Ms. Kelly for her leadership and Mr. Brannick for his leadership on getting those systems in place. We increased the presence of security cameras at the high school and all of our other campuses. We implemented new inclusive practices model at grades K through four and made adjustments as needed throughout the school year based on feedback from staff. Dr. Angstad, one of probably the largest challenge that we've had in years. And we took that, her leadership was key in helping us take on that challenge. We partnered with Lower Providence, as you saw here tonight, and Warrsester Township provides students with a learning, volunteer, and career opportunities in fire service. We made progress on the 73 strategies and 486 tasks built into the five-year strategic plan. We expanded the unified sports to include Bachi and we had a wonderful season. We contracted with vendor to complete facilities assessment, as we mentioned. We organized and held the district's first sustainability task force. We formed a district employee council to focus on staff wellness, district vision, and school climate. And we held a successful implementation of an Methacton CSI and hydroponics lab courses. And last but not least, yeah, we opened up a new elementary school in Arrowhead Elementary School. So thank you all for your support. Again, that's just a number of things that are part of a 10-page report that I provided to the board. And then we would move on to public comment on board action items. We would then go into fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. This month for the approval, we have the list of bills, Treasurers' Report. There's a motion under budgetary transfers to approve the business office to complete budgetary transfers in accordance with the recommendation of the auditors. Once complete, a full report we provided to the board and added as an advisement as well as reflected in the final audit. We have school breakfast, lunch, and lunch prices. Approve the school breakfast meal price of $1.45 and lunch meal price of $2.85 for Arrowhead, Eagleville, Woodland, Warrsester Elementary Schools. This is a 10-cent increase. This is effective 23, 24 school year. Approve the school breakfast meal price of $2.10 and the lunch school price of $3.15 and a premium meal price of $4.30. and a premium meal price of $4.30 for Skyview Elementary and Arcola School. This reflects a 10-cent increase for the breakfast and lunch meals and a 25-cent increase in the premium meal, effective 2324 school year. Approve the school breakfast meal price of $2.85 and lunch meal price of $3.35 for Methacton High School, reflects a 10-cent increase. And approve the à la carte entree price for $4.45 for the High School, Methacton High School, effective 2324. We also have the adult lunch prices. Approve the adult breakfast meal price of $2.65 and adult lunch meal price of $4.05 for Arrowhead, Eagleville, Woodland, and Warsaw Elementary Schools, effective 2324. Approve the adult breakfast meal price of $3.30 and adult meal, lunch meal price of $4.35 and the adult premium meal price of $5.50 for Skyview Elementary and Arcola Intermediate Schools, effective 2324. Approve the adult breakfast meal price of $4.05, adult lunch meal price of $4.55, adult à la carte entree price of $5.65 for Methacton High School, effective 2324 school year. We also have the student activity accounts to approve the creation of the student activity account for the class of 2027 and approve the closure of the student activity account for the class of 2023 with any remaining funds to be distributed in accordance with Policy 618. We have the decommit and the committed fund recommendation to decommit the fund balance of all unused committed funds. We have the unallocated fund balance to approve the unallocated fund balance ending June 30th, 2023, and access to 7% of the budget to be transferred to Capital Projects Fund to be used for Facilities Master Plan. And then finally, we have the Planetarium Change Order, which is to approve change order EC001 in the amount $11,540.40 for the rewiring of existing two main receptacle switches, include the ground wire, and remove and pull new feeder and ground cables to panel.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Questions from members to my right? Seeing none, questions, members to my left, Ms. Reese.
Just a quick one. I assume it's school code that we have to approve these, you know, school breakfast, you know, every year we approve it. Do you know, do we have to approve, now that we know the name, the prices of the Windy Hill Cafe food, or is that separate?
They'd be à la carte items, and we can make those recommendations and bring them to the board if needed, but we're not required to.
Any other questions, members to my left? Seeing none, we have personnel items. Dr. Sorgini.
Good evening and thank you for your consideration this month. We have the following personnel items. Two resignations classified, Deanna Rager, recess assistant at Woodland. We thank Deanna for her service to the students of Woodland this school year, and we wish her well. And Rita Zurich, counseling secretary at the high school for retirement. We're grateful to Rita for her 15 years of service to Methacton at Eagleville and at the high school, and we wish her all the best in her retirement. We have one employment professional, Ashley Alvaranga, science instructor at the high school. We're happy to welcome Ashley's return to the high school, and we look forward to the excellent work that she'll do with our students. We have two employments classified, Mary Schlenker for the position of personal care assistant. Mary has already been working for us as a casual, and we're excited to welcome her to full employment. And Andrew Bricker as a student summer worker. We welcome Andrew for the summer. We have three uncompensated leaves professional, including Michaela Whitehouse, English instructor at the high school, Janie Kelly, speech, sorry, special education instructor at Arcola, and Kelsey Takamori, speech language pathologist at Arrowhead, each for the time period identified. One uncompensated leave classified, Ashley Tornetta, custodian at the high school, also for the time period identified. We have supplemental contracts for the curriculum department, pupil services department, fall coaches, room movements, the summer boost program facilitator, and also driver's education instructor. The addition of John Dragoan and Michael Germana to the classified substitute list. We welcome John and Michael. And Josiah Joe for the position of community education lifeguard. We thank Josiah for taking on this important position. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Any questions from members to my left? Ms. Graff.
I just had one follow-up question. There was a comment from the public, and I just wanted to clarify. For student summer workers, are they required to live in the district?
There is no requirement. We did advertise those positions through our K-12 career counselor. She advertised those positions through our Career Spotlight newsletter and also through all of our Google Classroom pages to all of our students at the high school. We did not have any applicants.
So, but there is no requirement that they live in the district, so they could come from anywhere?
They could.
Great.
However, it is our preference to ask our students first.
Certainly, and we attempt to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members to my left? Ms. Reese?
Just a quick one. I know the summer's always a, you know, August comes. So when I, with the resignations, if a, and I, the classified, the professional, I know we've talked about the difference many times, but like, it's very nice of the recess assistant to let us know that she's resigning, and that gives us the whole summer to look. Are there different rules for classified? You know, if a chemistry teacher resigns in August, we can keep them 60 days if it takes us that long to find a chemistry teacher. How does it work for some of the classified employees?
For the classified employees, they generally give us a two weeks notice.
Okay, I was just, I didn't remember that. Okay, thank you.
And for both of those positions, they have been posted. We have applicants, and we are moving forward with interviews in the next several weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to my left?
Real quick, sorry. And I noticed on the fall coaches that we have less vacancies than normal.
We do, and we took the proactive approach of making sure that we have them on the agenda this month. That way, they are in place to begin over the summer.
Okay, perfect. Sorry. Thank you.
To my right, Mr. Winters.
Yeah, Ms. Reese, I thought you were going to ask this question. With the second resignation of a high school counselor, I know Ms. Hartson retired as well. I actually don't know if you've been able to replace that.
I'm sorry, it's a secretary for that position. So we did, we did replace the counseling position and the secretary position. We actually have multiple internal applicants. So we are moving forward with those interviews on July 6.
My apologies. I'm a mess today. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board for Dr. Sorgini? Thank you, Dr. Sorgini.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have curriculum and programs. Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening, everyone. I'm seeking your approval next Tuesday for the following revised curriculum for the 2324 school year. These reflect revisions to ensure that the planning course document fulfills components of the English, of the curriculum, in this case, English framework utilized by the district. It is academic English World 10, World Literature, and then English Honors 11. Just those are the only two curriculum, and they were shared with all of you and shared also at the Ed Committee meeting earlier this month.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Any comments, questions from members of the board to my right? Seeing none to my left? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Next, we have policy. Mr. Regina.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Just a few changes, most of them specific to formatting and spacing. 226 searches, there was some rewording that was done by the committee. And 227 controlled substances paraphernalia, there was some consolidation of some of the wording specific to off-campus activities. With regards to second read, there were no changes made from those discussed last month and first read. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Regina on matters of policy? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Regina. Next on the agenda, we have other, so gifts and donations. We have trips, approve the high school trip to participate in the chewed eating camp held at Camp Bryn Mawr in Honesdale, PA on August 17th through the 20th of 2023. Approve the high school trip to participate in Team's national competition in Louisville, Kentucky, June 29th through July 2nd of 2023. In terms of transportation, approve the following driver as part of the transportation employee roster, Thomas Tolby, under facilities, as presented here earlier this evening in the presentation, are the three recommendations for the board's approval and consideration. And 13, summer hiring authorization. This has authorized the superintendent to hire personnel to fill open budgeted positions between July 1, 23, and September 15th of 23, when the failure to hire prior to September 15th, 23, could, in the professional opinion of the superintendent, impair the ability of the district to appropriately fill open positions for the 2324 school year. As you recall, this is something we do on an annual basis to ensure that we have the highest quality teachers in front of our students day one. And then that ends the items under other. Are there any questions on any of those items? Seeing none. Madam President, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Next, we have dates for board members' calendars. Next week is our regular board meeting. In July, there is no work session. They will, the work session will resume in August with a work session and a regular board meeting. Next, anyone for any old or new business from the board? Ms. Reese?
Super quick, just because I won't be here to share the IU. The IU meets next week, but as always, we meet the day after our meeting. I just wanted to fill everybody in very quickly that I've explained they bought the Morris Road property. Now they have accepted the bids, and why that's important is the work, because they've accepted the bids, the work will begin, and Morris Road, their, I guess it's their third location, should be opening in July of 2024, and that building will be used mostly for transition services and intervention. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, since I probably won't be sharing about the IU till August because they don't meet in July. And I will send the board the summary that I receive, just so you're aware. And then real quick, I totally forgot about it, but, and it was not mentioned at our North Monaco meeting yesterday, because I think we were busy with other things at North Monaco. But there is our, the culinary arts student, the culinary arts students are in Atlanta as we speak. There's three students and a instructor there competing in the national competition. So we wish them well. I think it was opening ceremonies today, and the actual competition starts tomorrow. So if everyone crosses their fingers for them, that would be great.
All right, anyone else for old or new business? Okay, it's time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. Board, as you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Anyone for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Jim Malik, Warsaw. I always enjoy Dr. Zerby's, you know, how great things are here. But you kind of forgot a few things. You forgot the 25% to 30% test score drop for the kids since COVID. Never talk about it. I'm waiting for the plan. I'm waiting to see the results. One of your accomplishments that really you should be first and foremost in your presentation. State rankings per school digger, 11 in 2014, 85 2022. Cost per pupil, another thing you don't like to talk about either. 2021, it was you guys were $22,733. Put you in the top 10 most expensive places, cost per pupil, in the state. Don't hear about that either. Where's that? I don't hear it. Now, according to my calculations, it's $24,700. Ms. Drummond, you'd mentioned something about the reason we built the new Arrowhead was because of neglect. Don't think you quite got it right. Do you remember the M&amp;M studies that we did, the enrollment studies? That was one of the major reasons that you built that school, because of the projected increase enrollment. That never materialized. That was number one. Number two, it was a 50-year-old building. Number three, the classrooms and their configuration did not comport with education. Remember all that stuff? So I don't think you gave us the correct impression about Arrowhead. Bureau Veritas, what is the FCI? What is it? Totally subjective. And you guys forgot, a couple of you folks who were at the property meeting, forgot to tell the public about how that figure is inaccurate because didn't take inflation into account. Where, where is that, guys? I mean, I heard a bunch of you talking about it at the property committee. FCI, inflation, if you don't factor in inflation, it gives you a false FCI. The other thing that will affect the FCI is whether or not you do the HVAC project. So if you replace the HVAC at the high school, what happens to your FCI? Goes down, right? So all you got to do, if you want to see the FCI, take you out to 20 years, put a new HVAC in. But that's the problem. It's a totally subjective number comparative based on opinion. And you want to move forward on a new high school because you have your little committee plan, just like out of the Arrowhead playbook. Not this time, though.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. I missed the number of the members of the public that bring you their ideas. That's dropped off since you've cut the time allowed from four minutes to three minutes. The Bureau Veritas report. I'm hoping that report is available to the public after being voted upon next week. It should not have to be available only by right-to-know request. And I think members of the administration are desirous of getting a new auditorium at the high school or an expansion. With enrollment in decline, there was one year when we had about 1,900 students in the high school. It's going down to around 1,300. And I claim that that's a reason to live with what you have there because you also need to be responsible to your taxpayers. With regard to Arrowhead, there was a vote at the last month for bollards and fencing for safety at the Arrowhead Playground. Then I heard at property that there were some second thoughts. So I urged the board to consider getting an updated story on what's required and having another board vote. Separately, I'm not sure that the playground is adequately sized for the school, but that's another issue. Regarding the Audubon property, I estimate that that building value at the current time is on the order of $10 to $15 million. And I read daily in the paper about a special military operation in Ukraine, where Putin chooses to hit on the civilian population. And many refugees have been taken in by countries in Europe and perhaps elsewhere. And I can, I ask you to somehow consider use of the Audubon property for housing for 50 to 100 Ukrainian refugees. Who'd be funding to, I'm sure there'd be funding to enable that.
Thank you for your comments.
You cut people off at most inappropriate times, Board President. Sorry to hear that again.
Good evening. Katie Thiel, Lower Providence. First, I did just want to echo what was said at the very beginning of the meeting, which is the greatness of the fire department partnership. And having a child who's going into Arcola, who is also a boy scout and loves fire, I can see that there is a, an audience for that down there, just to like, pique interest and keep it going. So I just want to echo that as well, because I think that's fantastic, both for the community and the students and all the good stuff that comes with it. I also did want to echo the accomplishments of the district, particularly the full-day kindergarten. And along with full-day kindergarten, the implementation of the Hagerty Phenemic Awareness Curriculum. I have seen firsthand the immense growth of students at that grade level for their reading. And it's really reading and it's really spectacular and it sets them up for success for years and years and years down the road. So I just want to sing the praise of that because it's really fantastic. I also did want to follow the accomplishments of the new Arrowhead. As someone who was in the old Arrowhead a lot and saw the leaking roofs, the lack of a sprinkler system, which kind of made me feel uncomfortable, and also the numerous safety issues with the building in a post-Columbine world, thank you for prioritizing student and staff safety and for continuing to do that and careful planning. I did just want to call attention, and it's not on here, but I saw it in the policy of the EpiPen and the auto-injector, and I did look at the Code 2094 severe allergy and anaphylaxis. I've had personal experience with anaphylaxis and I've watched people go into anaphylaxis. And being also someone who's worked in school buildings, working on the opposite side of a building from a nurse's office, 20 to 25% of students who have severe allergy reactions are to an unknown allergen. So when time matters and in an allergy, in an anaphylaxis, a real one where two body systems are there, time is of the essence and I've seen it happen. I just, you know, check that policy, make sure it's, because I saw that it's written for students who are identified with a food allergen. So teachers should be able to identify quickly, all teachers. I don't know if that's in the policy or not, but just something to think about because when you're on the opposite side of the building and time matters, I know what to look for, but that time could really cost issues. So I just wanted to share that, but just thank you so much for all you do for all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor this evening? Seeing none. Any comments from board members?
I just want to make one comment if I could. Sorry, I know it's getting late, but it's important for us to recognize that the FCI, as it was referred to by a member of the public, is not an arbitrary number. Actually, it's a mathematical formula and it's actually an industry standard. So it's not something that just comes out of thin air. So we're taking an industry standard, we're applying it to Mathacton schools, and we're using that as a barometer to see what it is we need to do with our facilities and how soon we need to address those things. And it's not a matter of making an HVAC investment to lower the FCI. It's a matter of making sure that if in five years, our FCI is going to be 60% or greater, that before we make any other investments, we consider that investment along with the other investments over the period of time to make sure that the first investment is not lost in all the future investments. Because you don't want to, it's just like, it's just like a car. You have a $1,000 car and you take it to a repair shop and they say it's going to be $5,000 to fix, you need to make a decision about that. And based on your circumstances, based on other things, you know, it may be a bad investment to put $5,000 into a $1,000 value car, but you may have, you may have to make that decision. But we need, we need that information and we have to have that discussion to determine what's the best path forward for Mathacton schools.
And Dr. Zerby, I'm just following up on a comment that was made and just trying to remember the timeline. So the M&amp;M study that was presented back in the day, that showed not an increase but a decline in enrollment projected. Was that correct?
I believe it showed a slight increase in, a slight increase in, remember, there were three projections. There was the middle projection, the low projection, and the high projection, but generally it showed a slight increase and then a leveling off over time.
And then the leveling off, right. And then, okay, thank you. Any other, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back because there was a comment about the FCI and we did have a fairly extensive conversation in the property committee about whether the FCI took into account inflation. So I know we also, you have looked into that, Dr. Zerby. Do you want to respond to that?
Absolutely. So, you know, in all reasonableness, that conversation, you know, not knowing the definition and how the calculation is done per industry standard, you would think that either a property would depreciate or gain in value over time. Where we're seeing that in the chart for FCI, it creates the value of the property. I think it's like $119 million referencing the high school. And then over the next 20 years, it keeps that as a status quo. Whereas, so that the calculation is, as I explained in the presentation, it is really the now value against the immediate needs and the needs over those next 20 years. So it is, it is appropriate for it to remain constant over the 20-year period and not as a standard and not as we thought in terms of the application of our, you know, general knowledge towards how properties go up and down in value. So I think while those questions were good, helped us clarify the fact that, you know, we are on the right path with the industry standard and how it's calculated.
Great. And the other comment that I heard that I think we should also clarify was the one about the Arrowhead bollards. I know there was a significant discussion about those and I just want to make sure people are understanding kind of where we are on that.
Yeah, great, great point. So with Mr. Kenwood, our new facilities director coming on board and just revisiting the comments from the board meeting where the bollards, what were approved by the board, I felt it was important that we sit down and I think Mr. Kenwood agrees that, you know, we need to take a second look at what's the most appropriate process to put the right safety measures in for the long haul. So he engaged Mr. Regina and the safety team. We're also then having, you know, additional conversations about what is the best path forward. The good news is while the board approved us putting the bollards in, the contractor did not go out and purchase any materials at this point. So we're kind of on a hold until we, you know, develop that next recommendation associated with that. Knowing that it's important to this board as well as the administration and to our community that we have safety mechanisms put in place before the start of the school year. So we're working under the clock to try to get that all in place as soon as we possibly can, but just remember, you know, once you put those bollards in, I mean, they're there. And we know that A, safety is the most important part, but if we can provide a safe environment with an attractive environment at the same time, it might make a whole lot of sense for us with that long-term investment. So that's what we're trying to work out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Perdue?
I do just want to clarify. I believe a reference was made to one of the board policies in reference to allergies. And there is a policy specifically on allergies in reference. I believe it's Policy 209.4, severe allergy and anaphylaxis, and that's something that should be reviewed. I believe we do have, just because I have a student with severe food allergies and other allergies, I believe there's, you can have a plan, a health plan in place that's provided to the school nurse, also shared with the teachers. And I know our policy, I don't know how many kids read it, but there's things in there about it, about making sure you're aware of what allergies other students have, but the teachers also know. I know from the time my son has started him, in fact, most of his teachers know his allergies and can recognize and actually have sent him to the office if they notice. And sometimes I get the call and it's very minor, but they are very well aware. And maybe Mr. Regina can speak to the training that's provided to teachers. I think it calls to their attention.
Yeah, I don't, and there wouldn't be much of a concern, I think, for those individuals that have the defined allergy. And, but it may have been the question from the public for those students that may not recognize they have one. And so I think it's a great question from the public, something that we're going to inquire from nurses. So what do we have in place for those students that may not have a defined allergy, but in a case of an emergency, we can meet that need for that particular student. So it is something that we're going to plan on speaking with the nurses about. So thank you for that.
Great. Anybody else? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I see Mr. McGinnis. May I have a second to adjourn? Ms. Perdue, thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.